We are delighted to introduce a new face to our board this afternoon. Welcome to Alyssa Riley, who is our new non-voting teacher member. And she's joining us today as a special guest of our board. As we transition and say goodbye a little bit later to Jude and Joanne. Alyssa will be coming on along with our new student rep RJ Osborne. I'll mention him in just a second, but Alyssa, I see a lovely family on the front row. So I would like to give you a moment to say hello. Tell us a little bit about yourself and introduce your family, please.
Well, I appreciate you all letting me be a special guest today.
Yes.
My name is Alyssa Riley, and I have been in education since 2008. I've done elementary school for 14 years. And this last year I moved to high school. I actually work at a CTE campus in Christian County Gateway Academy. And we have started a teaching and learning pathway. So I'm working with hopefully future educators for the state of Kentucky. And I'm also an adjunct professor through Murray State and do the dual credit classes.
For the colleague of Polly.
Yeah. Just that's a little bit professionally. I'm a product of Kentucky Public Schools. I graduated from Woodford County High School 20 years ago in 2003. And I went to Western Kentucky University where I got my bachelor's and my master's degree. So I have gone through the K through 12 public school system in Kentucky. So I'm very appreciative of the opportunities. I have a child now that is in the public school system, Aiden. And then I'm married to an administrator in public school in Christian County at Hopkinsville High School. So we are a Kentucky proud public school family for sure. And I also have my dad here. Some of you may recognize him possibly David Couch.
He hangs around.
And my mom Tina, and then my youngest brother Logan too, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Well, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
So appreciate your willingness to serve in this role and look forward to the perspective that you will bring to our conversation, your day-to-day experience in schools, your deep work in CTE as you move forward. So I look forward to that very much.
Thank you.
Please.
And I just have to tell a story for everyone. Alyssa and our family had done such a good job keeping all of this a secret from father. We had our leadership team in here on Monday, and we were congratulating him on her appointment. And he's like, what?
Are you serious?
We totally wrecked the whole thing.
I thought for sure he would know.
Listen, as surprised as you were in this meeting, when you go home, act just like that. So.
Didn't.
He texted you before you left the room. Yeah. That's awesome.
The beans.
We love pulling one over on David Couch.
Doesn't happen often enough.
No, it doesn't. That's fair enough. I do think I also have a photo of RJ, who is our student member who's going to be joining. And I'm so excited because last night or sometime very recently, he hit a two-run hit in baseball. And they are now, Whitley County High School is now advancing to the final four in Kentucky baseball. So we're having a baseball star join us. I have not had the privilege of meeting RJ yet, but we certainly are looking forward to meeting him. And he will be joining us in the August meeting too. So as I mentioned, it'll be a little bit more bittersweet later on when we have a chance to hear from them. But this will be the last official meeting for Jude and Joanne, Joanna. We invite you, you have a table, you have a seat at this table as a member of our family. Moving forward, anytime that you guys want to come hang out in the Sauer Building, you are more than invited. But we will hear from you a little bit later on today. So I also want to virtually welcome and congratulate our two new appointees to the Kentucky Board of Education, Julie Pyle and Diane Woods, both of whom I know and are will be amazing contributors on this board and additions to our board. They were not able, they were just appointed last week. So we're not able to join us today at such short notice. But we look forward to meeting them in the August meeting and they will be sworn in. I believe Todd, you're going to arrange for that before we actually meet in August. So we'll have them officially onboard by August as well. At this time, Dr. Brewer, if you would, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams here.
Polly Bloodworth here.
Jamie Bowling here.
Patrice McCrery present.
Randy Poe here.
Sharon Robinson here.
Lee Todd here.
Steve Trimble here.
Lou Young here.
Joanna Stevens here.
Jude Dole here.
Secretary Jamie Link here.
Big Chair, you do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we'll turn our attention to internal board business. The summary minutes, you have several sets of minutes in the portal today. The summary minutes for April 6th are regular meeting, day one. April 7th, regular meeting, day two. The May 2023 KBE Special Committee meetings include the May 30th KBE Awards Committee meeting. And all of those were distributed to you in advance. Take a moment to hear if you have any corrections to any of these minutes. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Trimble, in a second.
I'll second.
Oh, I think, thank you, Jamie. I heard you from above my head. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion about our minutes? Hearing none, if you would, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item is membership renewal to the National Association of State Boards of Education, known as NASB. We have been members since 2020 and again since 2020. And it's time for us to approve membership dues for the upcoming school year. You do have the document in the portal that NASB provided outlining the benefits of our state level membership. I know that several of you, myself included, have been involved. Sharon and Jude have shared a lot about their work on student voice and agency and mentorship, as well as Sharon's work in government affairs. I've had the opportunity to serve on a couple of committees as well. And I'm always pleased with the high-quality offerings that NASB provides to us as state board members. It's an opportunity for us as professional members of a kind of unique club to be able to have some direction and some advocacy opportunity at the federal level on behalf of state boards of education. I think you probably know enough about that, but certainly open any questions you might have about NASB membership. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve membership to the National Association of State Boards of Education for 2324.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Bloodworth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Question carries, thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Patrice to talk about the Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education. But Patrice, Alyssa is our awards committee chair.
Thank you, Chair. The late Dr. Johnny Grissom served at the Kentucky Department of Education in the role of Associate Commissioner with the Office of Special Instructional Services. She provided steadfast commitment, service and leadership striving to help all students achieve at high levels, regardless of their disabilities. This award is given each year to a Kentuckian or a Kentucky organization to honor outstanding dedication to improving student achievement for students with disabilities. Criteria for the award include leadership or implementation of innovative practice and curriculum, instruction or assessment that leads to improved learning, post-secondary or workforce outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences, and district or schools demonstrating significant improvement or sustained excellence in learning or behavior outcomes for students with learning or behavior differences. On behalf of the awards committee, I would like to share that the committee met this past Tuesday, May 30th, and determined that candidate number eight best met the criteria of the award. Therefore, I would like to move approval of candidate number eight as the recipient of the Kentucky Board of Education 2023 Grissom Award for Innovation in Special Education. And as the Chair for the Board's approval, to recognize candidate number eight at the Board's upcoming August regular meeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Chair McCrery, and to Joanne for her work on the awards committee as well. As you know, coming from committee, this does not require a motion. Excuse me, this comes as a motion from the committee and therefore does not require a second, but any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of candidate eight for the Grissom Award, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Just want to relax and move into some discussion time right now. And let me see if I can frame this up as a question for us to talk about as a board team. And we'll spend a few minutes kind of having this conversation. Dr. Poe and I had a chance to talk earlier in the spring and often have run into some conversations or snags in our board discussion around moving toward United We Learn. In the middle of a system that we know is a legacy system. It's a traditional assessment and accountability system required by the federal government. We, several of us just came from the Interim Joint Committee on Education where we had a very similar conversation. Looking all the way back to the Kentucky Education Reform Act in 1990, taking a dive into the belly of the beast of the current assessment and accountability system in Kentucky with all of its requirements and intricacies. And then quickly pivoting to have a conversation about what the future of assessment and accountability because of what we're learning around United We Learn and what that might mean. In the interim, we, we have a bit of a dilemma. We have to live in this split-screen world. I'm going to lean on the Commissioner. He did such a good job when we were having this conversation with his team to kind of frame the question. And then we just want to spend a few minutes together in thought partnership before we then talk about the call to action work. We think this is one of those prequel conversations that we need to have before we just kind of keep moving forward around the traction we're gaining around United We Learn. So Commissioner, if you would.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, and thanks for the supportive words of what I was able to put together in our other conversation. That might have been a moment of clarity, so I'll try and recreate that for us here. I think describing the structures that we're in as legacy systems is the right way to talk about it. And it goes back to No Child Left Behind, which before that was No Child Left Behind. That was the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which had its roots in the civil rights era. Yeah. Going back to the War on Poverty, and there was a real focus on equity that was baked into that initial purpose for there being a federal presence in education. So we fast forward from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act in the 1960s into Goals 2000, which was really an effort to try and create a uniform set of standards, expectations for all students and a belief that all students should have the opportunity to work toward high standards.
Sharon was there when President Clinton signed Goals 2000 into law. Just want to make sure we anchor. Long in the tooth. That's amazing.
All that was certainly amplified when that transitioned into No Child Left Behind, which brought with it the requirements around annual standardized testing. And the reasons that we have annual standardized testing and accountability systems relate to a focus on equity or pulling apart different subgroups of students and identifying their different levels of performance so that we can see, more clearly see the differences in outcomes in students and with the thinking that that would create pressure on education systems to change funding and service delivery and to try and close those gaps. So I think if you look at what the purpose was behind the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and Goals 2000 and No Child Left Behind, and now it's, it's version called the Elementary or the Every Student Succeeds Act. ESSA. That's a, that's a noble purpose and that, that persists. So whatever happens going forward, that focus on equity is going to be really important. As is a focus on high internationally benchmarked standards and outcomes that all students should be able to work toward, that's going to remain important. As is a system that delivers some kind of accountability for results. So you can see what's happening and, and there's pressure for people to take action where the good things are not happening for students. And there was a real focus on making sure that those assessments were yielded comparable results. So that you, and that they were reliable so that you could have, there was consistency in how they were administered and that results from year to year and from place to place had some level of comparability. All those values or goals that were in No Child Left Behind and ESSA now are going to remain going forward. So the tension that we feel is now we move into the United We Learn era here in Kentucky. And so how do we move forward with its goals around creating meaningful, vibrant learning experiences for students? And how do we create an assessment system that better gets at that concept? And the whole host of skills and competencies that we know that are necessary to be successful citizen, worker, human being outside of what we have measured on No Child Left Behind era tests? So how do we get at that broader set of experiences and measure those things? So that's a tension. How do we do that? A second tension that we're feeling, that one of the other major goals in United We Learn is collaboration and connection with our communities. And of course, federal and state-designed accountability systems are completely disconnected from the values of local communities. They're externally imposed from Washington and Frankfurt. So a lot of our communities don't pay a lot of attention to them anymore. And they were not involved and continue to not be involved in the construction of those rating systems and the values that are put into them and the measures of what the community feels are important to hold their community schools to are not embedded in those accountability systems. So one of the other major goals in United We Learn was collaboration with our communities. So that creates a tension. If we're really going to do that when it comes to accountability systems, but we have those systems completely divorced from local involvement in their creation, that's a problem. And then the, the third major focus or goal in United We Learn is of course innovation, specifically when it comes to assessment and accountability. Because I think there is a recognition or sentiment expressed by Kentuckians that our systems of assessment and accountability don't connect well with what they'd like to see happening for students and what they felt like students needed to be successful going forward. So that is the world that we're trying to navigate through is how do we carry forward, execute, exist with our legacy systems and all the values that came with that system? That I think most people would say, I still hold those values. I still think those things are important. And at the same time, transform it into something that gets at these vibrant student experiences, genuine co-creation and collaboration with our communities and real innovation in assessment and accountability that have proven to be really glacial in the pace of their change over the past two decades. A lot of the educators sitting around this room remember the first standardized tests that were given in Kentucky. And we've moved them to online forums and computer adaptive testing and computer-based scoring. So things have gotten better and we've gotten systems of scoring, extended responses where we can get at some higher order skills. So our assessment systems have evolved, but they also look a lot like they did in the 1980s and 90s when we were doing them on paper. There's some element of that that's still the same. It's still a machine-scored, content-focused, grade-level academic test. So I think that is my attempt at least at framing up the tension of where we are.
Yet another moment of clarity.
That played out.
He's spent. No, I think that was really, really helpful. And I always appreciate, appreciate it when you take that retrospective. To remind folks who are listening to this conversation, those who are in the audience who have been framers of the legacy system, myself included, that this was, nothing about the current system was born out of any ill intent on the, on the part of educators at the state, local or federal level. When you know better, you do better. And I think we're at that place as a team where we need to begin thinking about how we can respond to superintendents who frequently say to Randy and to me, it's too much of a risk to let go of legacy practices until we know that the assessment and accountability system won't hurt us, until the assessment and accountability system catches up to where we're going with United We Learn. When I think about the original CARE curriculum, I was around in 1990 teaching, had been teaching for several years at that time. Jude, it was back in the other century. And what happened?
Chase says back in the 1900s.
In the, no. What was so beautiful about CARE, Kentucky really had a golden age in, from 1990 until the enactment of No Child Left Behind. And Jim Flynn said it this morning in interim joint. Kentucky was kind of harmed in the process because we were already doing so many amazing things around what were then vibrant learning, deeper learning experiences for kids, even though we didn't use that language. It resulted in overtesting teachers. The testing system is built on the backs of teachers and it just weighs them down. We have to also remember that most of our classroom teachers were kids through the No Child Left Behind era in our classrooms. So in many cases, that's all they know. So not only do we narrow the curriculum, but we narrowed this kind of worldview about what teaching and learning could actually be. It, the no good deed goes unpunished applies here in that the framers of No Child Left Behind never intended for it to be a test and punish system. But over time, that's exactly how it is perceived by those on the receiving end of results quite often. And the most lamentable part for me is that assessment and accountability, high-stakes assessment and accountability as it currently exists often drives the wrong kinds of practices in our schools. And it causes teachers a lot of internal professional conflict about what to do and what's best for kids. And frankly, in United We Learn, if we mean vibrant learning experiences for kids, test prep rarely looks like a vibrant learning experience. And I talked, and, and those kinds of experiences aren't good for kids and they're not good for grownups either. I talked to teachers all the time and they said, I didn't go into this system to be a test prepper. And so it's just kind of a reality check for us all as we have this conversation. As, as we've all kind of become enamored with the United We Learn notions and the way that L3s are developing and the ways that we're having these community-led conversations. As we lean into that, I think we are irresponsible if we don't stop and have a conversation about the fact that folks right now are mired in a system that doesn't look like all of the pretty slides that we put up about United We Learn. So I don't, we don't have an expectation of an outcome of the conversation, but to just kind of open that up and kind of grapple together with what that means for us. I'm going to lean on Dr. Poe to just kind of respond to what we've heard. Also, many thanks to Rhonda Sims and her team who have helped us work through a lot of these issues, as well as Kelly Foster and her team. They're the ones who are out there framing up and implementing legislation around assessment and accountability, as well as school improvement, targeted intervention and support for schools. All of those things, you know, are very laden by federal rules. One glimmer of hope that we haven't talked about a lot, Rhonda, I may not get this all right, but IADA is since the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act, IADA is now an option in several states are. Oh shoot, I thought I had it right here, Rhonda. It stands for?
Assessment Demonstration Authority.
Thank you. Innovation Assessment Demonstration Authority. So when the federal government started looking at the implementation of ESSA, they invited states to come into some piloting of what a better assessment design might look like. Kentucky is not one of those states, but their work is actively happening in Petri dishes, metaphorical Petri dishes all across the country. And we're trying to learn from that work. And we also see that as the feds kind of cracking open the door for a better way to approach assessment and accountability. So we're leaning into kind of the waves of the future that we're beginning to be able to recognize based on the new, the new federal law and then hopefully the new federal thinking about this work. Dr. Poe, might I ask you to jump in and also kind of reflect back on our first conversation?
Sure. And first of all, thank you. I think Dr. Glass summed it up very well and you did there too. The only thing that I would add or add to that particular conversation is that I think we discussed the past and what's current. And with United We Learn, we have to discuss what the future looks like. And with the future, I think that's where the issue comes as we discussed. It's not yes, but it's yes, and. Because we're always, as the Commissioner said, we're always going to have parts of the legacy assessment system as part of us. That, that, nobody, nobody excludes that. I mean, that's, we know, we need to know how many children are reading on third grade level and math on fourth and eighth grade level, those types of things. But I think there are other things that we have to measure within the curriculum that we've left out in the last 20 years. And Sharon, it's all your fault because you were there when I'm assigned. You know, we started leaving out programs like the arts and the other things. And we started doubling down on different things. And we know from years of research that doubling down on the, just doing the same thing does not particularly work. So we need to look at how we're going to be measuring things of success. And to me, that goes into opportunity and access. I think that every school district across the Commonwealth is different. And I think that there's a lot of good things outside of just some assessments that's taking place. When districts are adding programs like art and music to the things, there should be a bonus for that. We've got the, we can't just have arts in things for well-to-do children. Our poor children need that too. So there are things that add to academic performance. So those things of mental health, dealing with mental health. Some school districts are dealing with more mental health issues than others. So there should be some value for that when a district does those things. If a district is adding value to early childhood development within their community, that's a value. So where does the community standards come into play? So as we are looking towards the future, you know, Dr. Todd has said it in the past, when, you know, UK is going to be a research institution, well, NKU or Eastern is not going to be that. So why do we in K-12 look at everybody needs to be unique? So somewhere in the future, I hope that is our assessment and accountability. We look at access and opportunity and what school districts are doing for their children to increase academic performance and just not looking at a test score because a test score doesn't show everything that a district is doing. So that's my thing. And, and I think as we continue to move there, we have to celebrate both of those types of operation and not just penalize one.
Yeah.
And I think that's the big message is superintendents or, or school districts, shouldn't really say superintendents. I think teachers are part of that and everything else. The school custodian is part of that. What, what takes the pride? When, when it first came out, it was celebration of everybody. But then it became the burden, as you said, on the teachers in the classroom. You're either being successful or not based on that teacher. And that's not the case. We all know that. So that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, really helpful. Thank you. And something you said also resonated or reminded me, I think, Patrice, about the work that you're doing at the state level around whole child, whole school, whole community?
Yeah. So that notion, Randy, that the system had no longer kind of honors the fullness of the child's experience in schools is, is a real loss. And so thinking about ways that we can ensure that school districts, teachers and individual schools are recognized for their inputs and the really good work they're doing to meet the needs of the whole child, his or her family and the community, I think is really important in the conversation too.
Yeah. And as we go back, it's, it's the growth. You look at a particular district and you might say, well, they're not performing well. And this goes back to the early 1990s when our first commissioners would say you know, if you have migrant, you got to get bested at teaching migrant workers. Okay, well, that's great. But at the same particular time, what are we doing in relationship from the student that enters K and exits 12? And when we look and we peer down over long-term, and I know that our chief academic officer used to look at that data for us as school districts. And you can see a different version of a school that had students from K-12 versus what their state test scores are just at this point in time. That if you look at the building and the growth of those students over time, that the system itself was very successful. But unfortunately, because of migrant situations or other situations of situational poverty to an area, a factory moves out, those types of things change over time. So are we looking at that growth of student, not growth over two years, but growth over time? To say a district is not all of a sudden performing well when they were performing very positively, you know, previous to some of those shutdowns and things that happened in the community. So, you know, that's why I go back to it's access, opportunity, hope, well-being. There are other measures like, for example, I know we started within our system of looking at dual credit, but internships, dual-credit AP. We're only looking at those at the particular high school levels. But what are we developing on ILPs in the middle schools that lead to those experiences? Because, you know, we're, we're placing blame on the high school when in fact, if the middle school, did they do ILPs correctly? You know, that leads to those graduational efforts. Or there are some communities that get penalized because there's not a lot of internship. Or there are some communities that get penalized because there's not a lot of internship opportunities in some of our rural counties. So those children do not have some of the same rich benefits that others may have. But that school is going to be penalized because that's one of the mechanisms. And there is no other mechanism necessarily for them in place of those internships. So there's a lot that, there's a lot of good. We got to figure out what's the good. We got to figure out what's the bad things. And we got to figure out what's the great things for the future. Because I, I was posed with this question yesterday. If a, if a, if a district is building a brand new school today, based on its learning experiences, if we're developing based on the standards, that building is going to be there 2075. So the learning spaces that we create today are going to be there for 50 years. So when we're trying to create the next learning vibrant system, the assessment's driving our education. It's driving the building spaces and what we're doing or what a school is capable of doing. So as we're pulling all this together, we got to take all that into consideration.
Sure.
Are we projecting more than two to five years down the road?
Yeah, I am always reminded that the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago.
Yeah.
So that's the work that we engage in all the time. The other thing, Randy, I really appreciate about your comments there around the end is this really is about, is this is not about anti-accountability. It's not that we aren't holding ourselves accountable to the rig, the rigorous expectations that Jason mentioned. But instead it's what does, what do those measures look like now and in 2075 that will improve teaching and learning and experiences of learners all along the way? So that part of the conversation, I really do feel like it is a mantle of responsibility that we as the State Board of Ed bear to think about what that future could and should look like. Without again blaming or, you know, wringing our hands about the current system, we have that split screen responsibility. Dr. Robinson?
You know, it's, as I think about this, I want to say, oh God, it's complicated.
It's so complicated.
But you know, it's not complicated to the moms.
Yeah.
And the dads and the business leaders and the kids. The more personal and local it gets, the better and clearer it gets. So in our, in our work group experiences and the brief time that I've spent with the cool council, and I would say the long, 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 long in the tooth time I've spent thinking about the tools of assessment and data collection. And yes, accountability. It is, it's all been with the hope and the intention of collecting data and information that are used, that can be used by people to some, for something that they really need to get done. Cause it's no point, I've been a teacher. You don't need to burden teachers. It is ought to be immoral to burden teachers with work that does not need doing because they have, they have an abundance, more work than they can possibly do that really is important and must be done. So in the time that I've worked on policy and measurement and pedagogy, it's always been, how do you bring these things together so that they are in an organic and productive relationship? And that's a question that I keep, that I want this board to take very seriously because we can support the amazing talent at KDE to create the supports to nurture that organic relationship between modern pedagogy, modern assessment, and organic, ongoing, essential accountability. Being able to support folks understanding, are we getting what we want? Are we getting our money's worth? And most importantly, are we getting what we need to support our children and their ability to contribute to a vibrant community? I mean, it's really just that simple, right? But it, so I guess I would like for us to, as an aspect and outcome of our discussions, to have a really clearly articulated vision about assessment and accountability. Just as clear as our resolution on equity and inclusion was a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Because I think that clear articulation will help us hold ourselves accountable for supporting the work of the department and getting it done. And let me just add one other thing. The, this work does include our being informed, I think, really intelligent emissaries for this work as we engage at the local level. I think the, you know, we know a lot about a lot of things. But now I think to do, to serve our Commonwealth, we got to know a lot more about how to be accountable and how to help all of us be accountable for really meeting these objectives. And I, you know, I don't want to get too philosophical because, but if you're not doing it from the top up and from the top down and the bottom up, it's not getting done. It's not happening. So let's just, I mean, it's almost like I feel humbled that we got to learn a lot, do a lot, think a lot, reflect. It's, and perhaps maybe sum it up by being an expert learner, you know? Go back to the definition in our portrait of a learner. And how good are we at learning and collaborating to make something happen? So maybe we got a, maybe we got a project-based learning opportunity.
Right. And I, I think enough or we're not ready to segue yet. But the way that we think about our call to action as a learning agenda for this board to be informed, intelligent emissaries about this work is critical. I love Rhonda Sims and the way she and her team think about this work. But we have to know what the technical implications are of any new system that we begin to envision. And that means that we have to know what those unintended consequences may be. We have to really lean on her team and support from the Center for Assessment about validity and reliability. I met with a legislator this morning, had a chance to meet with him before the interim joint meeting. And he said, metrics matter. We have to be accountable to our communities. Metrics matter. And we said, absolutely, metrics matter, but they aren't single metrics. They aren't narrowed metrics. They're a broad picture of what works. And so I think if we get to make sure that in our call to action, our learning agenda, we get to that clearly articulated vision about assessment and accountability that you just described, I think we'll be light years down the road toward the effort. Thank you. Retired or sitting teachers, knowing that you've been closest to this work at the school level, what thoughts do you have, Mrs. McCrery?
Tomping at the bed.
Tomping. Listen, I thought you were about to leap out of the chair, but Joanna will grab your foot.
And just for the record, I was called to Washington DC as an acting teacher by the Secretary of Education to give my feedback on No Child Left Behind. So we had some, we've had some interaction there. It was not pretty. The, it was four, also four years down the road that they finally called teachers in.
That horse was out of the.
That backed me up to say, we've got to have our teachers steeped in this. Steeped in this because they are the ones in the trenches and they know what's doable and what is not doable. I have been, I'm a long in the tooth enough to have started my teaching career in Kentucky, coming in the end of January to take over a fourth grade class, not realizing exactly what I was going into in the height of Kara. And I had writing portfolios, math portfolios, assessment performances, and all of the assessments that were going to take place in mere months. I struggled to feel like I was teaching because I was putting out fires. I, I stepped into a situation where things were not, had not moved along as they should have moved along. And so I had to get those children ready for something. At some point in time, teachers start feeling like all we're doing is assessing. And that's not an accurate reflection of what assessment is. Assessment is to guide our instruction, not to be the tail wagging.
Drive.
The dog. So that's why I want to make certain that we don't make the mistake of saying four years into a process, although we have been pulling people in and families, communities, everyone, educators in. But in this stage where we are right now, that we bring in these people who are going to be our agents of implementation and get their perspective, is this doable?
Yeah, I hear you.
Calm some of the nerves.
And I know that we are actually, of course, engaging a lot with teachers in the L3 districts, but I hear you. It's got to be much broader than that. People who aren't even yet to that point. Dr. Todd?
Have we ever had a thorough review of why the portfolios failed? I think it, you know, it was really one of those ways to look inside a child's mind and see what they were thinking, but it just didn't work. And as you were talking, I'm reminded of a business case I had when we had to expand our business. I would go to each individual employee, say, what is it that you can do best that you need to do? And what is it that you'd like to hand off to somebody else to do? Called a work segmentation. And if you, so I wrote in, we asked the children to write. We asked the teachers to teach, the children to write, somebody to read the portfolio and then feed back information. If the teachers are best at teaching, are they the best at reading and feeding back the performance of the child? Is there a way to segment that? You've got to get the feedback to the child and say, this is right, this is wrong. But you can't ask the teacher to do all of that.
They do.
I know. And it's, that's, if you were to analyze it, somewhere it fell apart. I think that parents in many cases didn't really appreciate the significance of it. And that's one problem we really have in Kentucky is, is bringing about change in the way we, we do things like this. But there needs to be a process where you don't force the people who do their best job to be so burdened they can't do that. So is there a way to have an agent, you mentioned what you're getting at, but you said, instead of having consultants come in and tell you what to do, do you need people to come in and do certain, and have legitimate roles in doing the assessment of some of this? But doing it as a partner with the teachers so that they get the proper feedback to see what's working and what's not working?
I'm going to say that was part of the most valuable part of the writing portfolio as a teacher because I could use that as an assessment.
Yeah.
But then heaven only knows what the prompt's going to be come time when the.
On demand.
Accountability.
On demand.
Right. Yeah. And I, I mean, I'm an unabashed fan of the writing portfolio. I didn't know math portfolios very well, but what we learned at the time and heard consistently from post-secondary folks was that Kentucky kids wrote better than they had written in decades before. So we know that it worked, but the burden was on the back of teachers. And so one more time, teachers want to do well. They want their kids to do well. They want their school to do well. So then it became more of a time expenditure than teachers could actually really afford. And then we shot ourselves in the foot around validity and reliability, kind of abdicated our responsibility to say, yes, this is a valid assessment tool. And Jim Flynn mentioned this morning Campbell's Law, the more high the stakes are in decision-making, the more likely it is folks are going to corrupt the system. And so that certainly began to set in a lot of infighting and accusations about whether people were cheating on writing portfolios. And so it really kind of spiraled. And that will be negative transfer for us. That will be baggage moving forward. If we think about a digital portfolio, just the word will conjure up, you know, those rooms where three-ring binders went to die. You know, all those visual images will come back to those of us of a certain age. And so we have to be thinking about that again. That's the reality check of the conversation when we move forward.
So here's, here's, I mean, I've often wondered, what if there were a way that we could provide teachers with a whole ocean, a vat of, of items, assessment items, based on our standards, based on the portrait of a learner, based on the best thinking of teachers to come together to design them and provide the scoring rubrics and so forth. And teachers would go to this database of items for assessment as a part of the instructional process.
We've had that to a certain degree before.
Well, but to the point that we are actually creating the data pool from which accountability data would be extracted and analyzed so that the assessment that teachers are doing is about learning and the analysis that others may be interested in doing is about other forms of, of other questions, other functions. It wouldn't be all the assessment that teachers would use, but it would be an assessment tool available to them based on the need to support, to provide tools to support the enactment of the curriculum, the achievement of the standards, the things that we commit to doing, but use the assessment tool as a way to support the, and inform students and teachers about their part of it. And have them be at the vortex for change, generating need up throughout the system through their use and, and the information it provides, rather than have them be on the tail end or at the end of the ruler or the stick or the whip even. I don't know. It's just.
I, you know, I think Lynda Darling-Hammon and Park and Smarter Badens had some of those ideas around performance assessment. You know, maybe 10 to 15 years ago. I, I do like this notion that teachers would crowdsource.
Yes.
You know, really, really good items that are validated, externally validated.
Yes.
And that we might, you know, begin to share in, kind of look behind the curtain in terms of what good assessment and accountability practices. And then student work would then bubble up for the purposes of accountability. And I think those, those kinds of ideas, Rhonda, those, I don't know how much we've talked with Center for Assessment about some of that stuff. I know KnowledgeWorks is looking at some of those ideas too. But if we can think really differently about the source of the items, I think would be kind of an exciting way to think about it. If it's more naturally occurring, I think teachers would buy into that.
Do you feel like some of that is done with the LDC work?
Um, you know, we did it with LDC and MDC a lot, and there was a lot of collaboration. That's literacy design collaborative, math design collaborative. I know you did MDC work. We had LDC and Jessamine. And you had this really kind of powerful professional community of folks who said, we only want, we will only accept high-quality items into our circle. And so that's the teacher professionalization that I think is, we've, we've taken that away. One of the legislators today asked, yes, Representative Bojanowski asked something about, I don't see any of those items. I have, it serves no, she said, no educational purposes. I might think that there are some, but, and from that teacher's perspective, there was nothing about the state assessment and accountability system that informed the work that she did on a day-to-day basis. But if teachers have some stake in the design of it, I think it really would make a big difference.
And how wonderful would it be if they were paid for doing that?
Professionally compensated for intellectual work. Yeah.
But how wonderful it would be to have the assessment that they are doing feed into a database like other, like other professionals. I mean, lawyers don't, they don't create a different set of data for, to hold a lawyer accountable. It's practice. It's the results of practice.
We, Rhonda, we've done something along those lines in the past. I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, where you clicked on a link of a standard and it would take you to lessons and assessments.
Like blue ribbon.
Like blue ribbon lesson design or something? I, I know we did that with LDC and MDC.
These some items come linked to the standards or like to the science items, things like that. We have teachers involved in the development of the current assessment, but it's not all developed by teachers. Some of the time it's more developed by teachers. That is, but certainly very good um, thinking about practices moving forward that hopefully the world and technology would open up a
Right, right. And then artificial intelligence.
And we're using AI already.
Um, Ms. Floodworth and Dr. Poe.
I do think, just looking at this, whatever our kind of summative assessment is, as a teacher, I did not get any feedback from that. So I think building more of that in is really critical if we want it to impact what's going on in classrooms. You pretty much just would get a number or a
Yeah.
generic thing, but like we would want to know, well, what kind of reading issue was it? Or what kind of questions did they miss so that you could really pinpoint where my failing in my instruction? And I was not, because a summative is honestly more a reflection of me than the student in a way.
Right.
It's my, what I've done in the classroom. So I needed the feedback of what was I teaching well and what was I not teaching well?
That's the true value of assessment.
And it has to be timely feedback, that getting the feedback in October of knowing my student was proficient. But I don't have that student anymore, they've moved on.
Yeah, timely, relevant, actionable is, we definitely heard that in the conversation this morning too.
But I just want to add, I think those things are there. We, we say, you know, better assessments or technology, I think those are there. I think the problem is, is we just have not used those on a statewide level. Formative assessments are there, they're being used by teachers every day in the classroom now. OECD, the piece of like attacks had for, for 15-plus years, uh, measuring the work that we're talking about in a portrait of a graduate and measures it. The question is, is we, are we going to continue to be able to push that for our future design and say, we're going to use that? I mean, we can measure 20-some-plus years ago, I was measured on my National Coaching for Soccer Skills on an adaptive system. It's been there. We just have not used adaptive systems in our test that analyzed, I mean, I mean, for 20 years. Uh, you know, we were sitting there using formative assessments in the classroom, teachers usually. We wait for the assessments to come back in October. You're right, they're non-useful at that time. Teachers, schools are already making their plans based on their formative assessments. So when are we going to build a system that will take formative assessment into accountability for our summative assessments without having to take another summative assessment at the end of it? Because we already know the growth, we've already plotted that. We look at and we talk about for our teachers right now. I mean, if Kelly was here, what, what they look for when they go in for the schools, it's not being successful. They look whether that uh, PLC is looking at a data for that student, where are they progressing on their line, going up or not going up? It's there. The question is, are we going to be able to use it? And as the commissioner said, we've got the legacy between now and what the feds are doing. But what are we going to do in the meantime? And are we going to say that's going to be part of our assessment? And, and, and you're right, we're not answering that question here. We've got to have that community conversations out there, just as we're doing with United We Learn. And that's, that was the purpose, I think, of this conversation is there's multiple groups already formed. So we don't want to do new multiple groups. We just want to hear from those groups what they're talking about so that that then, I mean, because ultimately, whatever it is, we vote on it, but we want to hear about what they're creating as they're going versus waiting till the end. And then us trying to say, well, did you think about it?
Yeah.
Well, of course they thought about it, but we don't know if they thought about it, if we don't hear about it.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, we, we can't say we got to wait on technology, technology's been there. We just got to adapt with the technology of the change. And as you said with IA, I mean, you know, all those different things uh, are there? You know, are we running away from it or are we embracing it? And, and that assessment and that accountability, if our system doesn't change, then we're outdated in what we're teaching because of AI.
Yeah.
We're dooming our kids for the future.
Yeah, you know, you and I have talked a lot about adaptive change versus technical change. So we don't want to just build a better mousetrap.
Right.
You know, we've got to have a better, more human-centered system and all that entails. But yeah, we absolutely harness the technical um, functions, tools that are at our disposal. I think it's really important in the conversation.
You know, and I think that, you know, part of this is with United We Learn. And like I said, I believe in it wholeheartedly, what we're doing because we're pushing that envelope. And we just need to be supportive of all, so when we're pushing that envelope. But how do we reward formative assessments in the classroom? How do, I mean, I think those are there. We have to hear from the field and, and, and uh, move this conversation forward on this particular topic. Be- because if we don't, all we get is pushback, pushback. Wow, we're, we're not changing the assessment system. We can't change everything, but we can value what you're doing. We can speak on behalf of United We Learn groups if we know what they're talking about or if we're hearing. But that's, that's my thing is, is been, is what are LC three schools doing and what are they talking about? We will hear next week from, superintendents will form their advocacy agenda. I know teachers will form their advocacy agenda. We need to form ours and are we talking as a group? Um, because we got representatives on all these groups, but we don't necessarily hear from the different groups.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely. Joanne.
And I'm, I'm really interested in the structure of the assessment. You know, we're, we're testing children and we are asking children to do things that are developmentally inappropriate, that are physically inappropriate, um, that can actually harm their mental health. Um, yes, the technology is great, but children shouldn't be sitting and testing at a computer for four hours. And until we take into consideration how we can find out what children are learning without putting them in adult situations where adults can see what they're learning, we need to see how the children do that themselves. Uh, not something that's imposed upon them. And I really want us to, you know, it is important how, what the teachers do. It is important how, what the administration does, but we need to look at those children first and foremost. What they can do and how they can perform the best. Cause we want them to show, um, show their good learning and
Yep.
it's not happening with this.
Yeah, I do think that the more humane system is, um, we're begging for it. We've got to be kinder and gentler as we move forward. Mr. Turnbull.
I think our biggest problem is that we assess in the individual kid. And, and that's because everybody special in what they want to do and, and different schools and different parts of state need to do different things. And we look back at some of the assessments in the past. And when I was at the middle school, we had a performance assessment that for a while there, but then it went away right before the test, we remember.
Yeah.
We practiced that stuff over and over.
Oh, yeah.
And then it just went away and, and then knocked the portfolios. And they were so subjective that that went away, even though it made great riders out of those kids that were in the eighth grade at that time. And uh, and, and we'd come back to that, the eighth grade teachers had the math portfolios, English language portfolios. They had four assessments. I mean, it was, we about killed them.
Yeah. Assessments on the backs of teachers.
And then portfolios took so much time and then, you know, in class, but also for the people grading it. Cause you have blind grading, this grading, and then it becomes subjective and they committed an audit and you were never correct, even after all that training and, and everything. So the biggest, I think the biggest hurdle we've got is to figure out this individual thing. And how do we, how do we assess performances, individual performances? And, and, and that's, I think that's the hardest thing. And I don't think we're ever going to get away from uh, the general testing where everybody compares everybody else. And, and I always hated that as a, and you did, as a superintendent principal. Um, but that's always going to be there some way, somehow, somebody's going to figure out how to, how to do that. But uh, and there's, and the reason that's bad is because you've got so many different situations, different parts of the state.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, but that's, I think that's the hurdle we've got is figure out a way to assess these individual type situations that we want to come up with with this.
Yeah, agreed. And it's 2023, I tell people all the time, this, this is the age of personalization. We all want something for ourselves that's unique to ourselves individually. And I think we've got to figure that out in, in an assessment system too. Um, I, I overuse the example of the driver's test, but in terms of subjectivity, we, we allow state troopers to make a decision. What is the most reliable test? Well, it's the written part. I mean, it's the multiple choice online and we can statistically see how kids do. But none of us would be say, would say that's good enough to put them behind a wheel, right? So the performance is what happens when a professional law enforcement agent watches them drive and makes a decision about the quality. Now, I know that's overly simplified when we're talking about a, a child's full education, but we have professional educators who can make those kinds of decisions. So the system can be designed, I'm absolutely convinced, um, with, as long as teachers have the time and the professional development and the autonomy to make those decisions together, I think. Lee.
This, this is maybe off the wall, but um, just envision you've got a three teachers teaching classes full-time. But then you have a teacher that's really specialized in assessment, who's on the same faculty, in the same room, I mean, in the same building, working with those three teachers all the time, and those are kids. But her job is to assess, or his job is to assess. And they feed the results back in some form to each of the teachers, maybe go in and speak to the classes and talk about what they need to do to improve it. But we've got to realize, we've got to put some investment in somewhere in this assessment piece because we cannot ask the teachers to do it all the time. Possibly a workforce development process would be to have individuals who don't really want to run a classroom, but they want to be a part of the educational process. They have a lot to add and they could take the position to support three teachers in an assessment pool, something like that. We, we got to make it easier because you can't do it, you like the feedback. But you could find some pretty compassionate people who would love to be in the educational process, but they don't want to be in a classroom dealing with the classroom situation. So maybe there's a new role for colleges of education to create
Yeah.
assessment experts who, but they've got to be physically there. They can't be a, a clearinghouse that sends you the results at the end of a month. They need to be there, we can have those afternoon conversations and be a part of the entire educational process.
So you're really vibing on the inner Sharon Robinson here because we often talk about, it is such a set of complex expectations for a teacher to be a good deliverer of instruction, a good assessor of learning and a good giver of feedback that informs the delivery of instruction. There's so much complexity in the work of high-quality teaching and learning that this idea that if we could retool the profession in such a way that we have master teachers and clinicians who work together to better meet the needs of students. Um, to me, that's a really exciting glimpse of the future and what that could look like. And frankly, schools and districts could do that right now if they had a vision for that. There's nothing that keeps them from doing that kind of model. It's just not the way we've done practice, right? So, um, but the demands I think are greater all the time. And that with the um, um, the real constraints school districts are facing with the educator workforce right now, it's going to demand that kind of thinking, Lee. It's going to, we're going to have to reimagine what that would be like professionally.
The trick is funding as well.
Yeah.
And would it affect class sizes? And there's, there's that budget.
Yeah, right. It's not just throwing all the additional people. I think it's reconsidering the roles of the people who are there. Um, yeah, because we certainly, even if we had the money to throw additional people at them, we don't have the people to throw, right? So yeah, kind of a, a re-imagination of the um, educator workforce experience, I think.
Yeah.
All right, um, I think we should just move right into the call to action. Um, and um, first, thank you for your thought partnership in this conversation. And I think that that was well-designed, Meredith, and actually just kind of pivoting us to what we're calling a call to action. We, um, I think Sharon may have referred to it as our learning agenda as a board. I really love the chance to have Jude and Joanna here as we take a look at kind of this draft as it has, has grown up. Um, really hearing my inner Randy that says, we've got to be informed incrementally all along the way. I think this gives us an opportunity to look at this now for a second time as the work of three small groups have started. So Meredith, do you, yeah, you have a document here. Um, I know you hate this part, but if you will help me kind of talk through what's happened with the small groups um, that have been convening over the course of the last month. Um, and then we, you, this is in the portal and I don't know how much time you've had to spend on it, but I'd like us to take a look at this. Uh, before I uh, turn the mic over to Meredith, what I would like us to consider today, if we feel ready, would be approving this as a draft. And I know that's kind of weird, but I think if we approve it today and put an initial stamp on it, knowing that it's going to continue to grow up over the course of the next few months and into the fall, um, then we'll re, we'll look at it again in August and perhaps even October if we need more time. I think it's also really helpful as a prequel to Robin coming up and talking to us about uh, budget considerations, et cetera. So I think it has a lot of utility for us as we move forward, but I would like us to put a draft today if we feel ready. Draft approval today if we feel ready. Thank you, Terri Young.
Uh, so uh, at the request of the board, we developed um, a learning agenda for the month of May. And so uh, three work groups were formed around the inclusive learner experience. And I will flip to that graphic. Um, so you'll see here that at the center is the prepared graduate and then sort of um, moving out in each of those uh, supporting circles are learning experiences, assessment practices, accountability mindset and accountability structures. So we created three work groups and KBE members were invited to select a work group that they were interested in participating in. And we also extended an invitation to KDE uh, staff members. Uh, they have shared that they are very interested in United We Learn, but haven't um, had an opportunity to dig in to some of the conversations that uh, some of our community partners have, have had the chance to um, participate in. For example, the United We Learn Council. So we wanted to create an opportunity for teen KDE members to um, be engaged in these conversations as well. And we also invited um, student members and we had in-service teachers. And we actually had classified staff members that were invited as well, um, that were recommended by one of our partner um, agencies. So the groups met, um, each group met three times. So we had nine total work groups that met throughout the month of May.
It was like speed dating.
It was, it was quick. So the way that we structured the work group so that we could take advantage of our short amount of time together, um, each group was sent a fair amount of homework in advance of each meeting. And so um, I want to take this opportunity to send um, my heartfelt gratitude to Sarah Snipes, Audrey Gilbert and Andre Rupp, who um, agreed to chair our groups uh, and were fantastic throughout this whole process. So um, in advance of each meeting, members received an email with some readings and uh, questions to ponder upon before we met virtually. And then during the meeting, we filled um, every minute of that one hour uh, engaging in a variety of conversations and small groups. And then um, we left with another assignment and more work to read in the interim between meetings. Uh, and the last meeting, each group developed um, some value statements or beliefs that they felt like uh, fit with, under their particular group's uh, charge, that they wanted to recommend to the board for consideration. Uh, so that is what is in the document. Uh, one additional product that we did not anticipate, but I think will be very helpful. Uh, Dr. Rupp's group um, started the development of a theory of action. And you do have a copy of that. It is um, a lot to take in. Uh, so there, Polly has readers.
Yes.
So, um,
On the portal.
If you look on the portal, you can make it zoom in, that's right. Um, but that is another thing that we intend to refine during the summer, uh, to sort of think about the right um, level of Zoom so that we can capture um, an important part of this work, which I do think a theory of action um, addresses. Uh, one thing that I, I shared with Risha Robinson and with Chair Young, Dr. Rupp uh, does a great job of, of asking questions and finding flaws in your logic. So he, uh, those of you who are in his group um, got to experience that. So, you know, we would say something and he would say, right, but what does that mean? And he just had us keep digging and digging. And so that is what um, led to the development of the theory of action. So we do have those value statements uh, for each group for you to reflect on today. And then um, some extra work for us to do over the summer as we think about the theory of action. And then the last page of the document, um, that's currently called the road ahead, um, where the board needs to consider next steps for dissemination of this document uh, and other work that you want to do in this advocacy space.
So if I could, um, given the discussion we just had, if you would turn your attention to page 11, uh, as an example of what Sharon referred to as um, a clearly articulated vision for um, the future of assessment and accountability, that's an example from our assessment practices team. So you can see the belief statements there, I think resonate with what we've heard today. A system that that fosters a sense of shared responsibility for the success of all learners. I had a visual image of Patrice in her fourth grade classroom. The one break in the academic and physical sweat day in and day out was the fourth grade teacher, right? So how do we build a system that shares the responsibility so that everyone is engaged? And and I would say including university presidents and local business owners and everybody inside the education system for sure. So take a look at those for a minute, just to get some sense of how this would inform our work moving together. And of course, we're always open to what might be missing. And then feel free to hone in on any particular, particular one of these you'd like to comment on or have further conversation about. The accountability mindset piece, of course, on the next page is the companion to the assessment practices. So together, that makes a really powerful statement. There's some nice redundancy across here, Meredith, too, that I think really kind of punctuates the conversations we've had about what is most important to this board. So thoughts about the agenda or feedback?
You know, I like the idea of support professionalism of teachers. And I really think that's, that's important, but I don't think a lot of people really understand what that means.
Right to the workforce, yeah.
And, and, and I think a lot of people don't understand how much there is to know about practice, about pedagogy. I mean, I hate to use the word pedagogy, I know, because it sounds jargonistic to, to those. But, but professional teaching practice is, there's a lot to know. And the more we know, the more we learn about how people learn, the more there is to know about professional teaching practice. And so, I don't know, professionalism just, it doesn't get it for me right now as it relates to assessment, because I want, I want to be clear that what we want to do to support, we want an assessment system that supports the enactment of high quality teaching practice. Or high quality learning experiences or some, I mean, this is like, we're not trying to, this isn't, this isn't a throwaway line here, professional teaching. This is serious scientific, skill-based, knowledge-based, gotta be learned and practiced and reflected on and learned. And it is, this is, this is a real deal here. And teachers depend on it. They, it's a tool for them.
Yeah, it should be.
It should be, yes.
I think we can counter that notion too. And for me, Meredith, under vibrant learning experiences, I think it's just, maybe it's just the word that is missing for me. But if we could have more some words related to the development of student agency and ownership of their own learning, it's there. It's inferred in several places. But I would love to ensure that we are thinking about the science of learning and the emerging nature of the science of learning so that we do say that student agency is a valuable outcome of the learning experience. Is a little scary, Meredith, to get to the road ahead and see this blank. Just saying.
Unwritten.
When my GPS does that, it frightens me.
Got you. That's right. Theory of action, road ahead. Yes, we have some work to do. Other thoughts or feedback kind of about where we are, knowing we still got a couple of months to marinate on it and think about what that might look like? Helpful? Yeah, it feels grounding to me.
I love this mission statement, specifically when it says a happy life. I had a psychology professor who her whole mantra was she would never wish us success, that she would only ever wish us happiness because success can be measured in so many ways. But happiness is success. And so I, I love that it says a happy life. So that's kind of one of my favorite things. That's how I knew I was going to love the rest of it. Like, I really love that wording. And then also lifelong learning, I love how that's in this entire document, how it's a constant reminder that education doesn't stop after you graduate high school or after you continue learning and it's, it's ongoing and it's forever. So I really like how we continue to push lifelong learning and that idea.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Teri Young, I do want to say the amazing Sarah Snipes is watching right now somewhere in cyberspace. And she just sent me an email to your request. We stand for student voice and choice, viewing it as vital to student engagement and ownership of their learning. We empower students to make key decisions about their learning, helping them develop critical thinking skills and a sense of agents.
I'll take that.
Okay. So that was one of the the statements that that that's right, that they entertained, that's correct.
She didn't just make that up.
She could have because that's how good she is. But no, that was one that we had actually entertained.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And do board members have access to all of the ones that were in the basket? Or might we provide that?
Absolutely, yes, we will send all of them.
This is just the one from the accountability practices group, but each of them would have looked very similar to this kind of All right, again, thank you guys so much. I, I leave here feeling fed just by the conversations that we get to share with one another. It's been such a rich experience. So thank you for your engagement in that conversation. Given that it is a draft, not shying away from nothing from the fact that there are art words that can be changed. I would entertain, if the board so chooses, a motion to approve this draft call to action with the understanding that the document will be shared widely with stakeholders for refinement throughout the summer in advance of a final review that will take place probably in August. Mrs. McCrery, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bloodworth, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries, thank you. You're on.
Okay.
Report of the commissioner.
All right, thank you. We have a slide, a few slides to put up. Thank you. The last week of May, I had the honor along with Chair Young to attend the graduation ceremonies at KSB and KSD. In the past, a few others of you have attended those as well, and you know, it's a delightful event. The, these schools serve students from across the Commonwealth, many of whom have faced multiple challenges in their school career. They give the students the skills and competencies they will need to navigate and succeed in the world, be happy in the world. On May 23rd, nine students closed out their career at KSB. Among those students were Cory Wallace and Alex Hitzlberger, who were saying goodbye to a school they had attended since they started kindergarten. The mothers of these students said the school was like a family and helped provide their children with the skills they need to be successful in life. The other graduates included Caleb Adams of Shelbyville, Faith Cook of Louisville, Eric Etcheverria of Louisville, London Henry of Louisville, Tamia Jordan of Frankfurt, John T. Moore of Louisville, Erin Willoughby of Elizabeth Town. And then on May 26th, we got firsthand experience, the kind of dedication these schools create at the KSD graduation in Danville. One of the delights was meeting Beulah Hester, who from 1937 to 1948, the 94-year-old Hester attended KSD, but she left before her senior year to start a family. Despite not finishing her coursework, she remained connected and committed to KSD and was employed by the school as a dorm house parent for 30 years until she retired in 1990. This year, she was finally awarded her honorary diploma. And she was one of four students to walk the stage as the campus celebrates its 200th anniversary. The other three graduates included Micah Tucker of Irvine, Malumba Asukula of Lexington and Alex Fralit of Elizabeth Town. And of course, Beulah Hester of Danville. On May 28th, following the news of Toya Roby's retirement as the principal of KSD, we immediately began the search for a new principal. I want to thank Toya for her leadership over the past six years. She's been a steady influence on KSD and I appreciate the service that she has provided to the school. And I know that we all wish her well in the next phase of her life. KDE and I are fully committed to the success of KSD. It is very important that we incorporate student, staff, family and community voices throughout the search process so that we can make an informed decision about how we proceed in the search for the next principal. This has truly been a team effort as several offices and divisions here at KDE have been involved in the process, including our communications team, our division of strategic planning and research in the office of the commissioner, our office of finance and operations, the office of educational technology and the office of special education and early learning. You can see on this slide, the process that we followed, starting with the posting of the job on April 28th and concluding with two community forums and the closure of a two-month-long community feedback survey. We had two dozen people participate in the virtual forum on May 24th and 75 people participate in the May 31st forum at KSD. The information, information we gathered from those two forums and in the survey, which had 75 responses again, are now being condensed into major themes and used as part of the interview process by the interview committee who will be considering the candidates. Videos from each of the forums has been posted on the KDE media portal. We plan to hold interviews the week of June 19th with the start, targeted start date of July 1. And this really has been a very intentional effort to make sure that we have lots of feedback on the selection of the new principal. New members were selected for next year's Commissioner Student Advisory Council. On May 22nd, we had the pleasure of announcing 25 new members of the Student Advisory Council. The group meets regularly with KDE leadership staff and myself, both in person and virtually to discuss how decisions made at the state level are affecting students throughout Kentucky. Members of the advisory council offer valuable insights to us here at KDE and it's essential that students continue to have meaningful and purposeful voice in decision-making. Last year's council offered a list of key recommendations regarding school safety and how we look at hearing from and working with exceptional student leaders in the year ahead. And we look forward to working with these exceptional students in the year ahead as they work on another project, this one centering on student voice. More than 100 students applied for a spot on the council, so getting a lot of attention on it. Membership consists of four positions from each of the state Supreme Court districts, one student from the KSB, one student from KSD. Student members enrolled in career technical education pathways are also included. Additional information about the council is available on the KDE website. And I'll just say that every place, every time I go on a trip around the country, an education trip around the country, people want to talk to me about this group. So they're, they're widely, widely known and respected for the work that they do. And Kentucky's really held up as an example of how you work, work with and support student voice. So these 25 new students will join 12 returning members. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks and my full report can be found in the board portal.
Excellent, thank you so much. And thank you for the investment you make in Kentucky kids at the graduations with the work of the advisory council. I think they love working with you and are always happy to get to spend time with you virtually and in person. So thank you for that. The graduations, again, were just like having cake and eating it too, to get to see the, those great schools in action. Special thanks for the commitment that you and your team have shown to really open up the process for the selection of the principal at KSD. That will matter a lot to the community and I know that that's a genuine effort on your part, so thank you.
Yes, these values of co-creation and inclusion that we are working to make habits force us, if you really believe in them, you have to walk the talk.
Yeah, they serve us well, yeah, yeah. They hold us accountable for those kinds of commitments, so thank you for that. All right, pretty close to on time. At this point, we are looking at a, make sure I am in the right spot, yeah. Associate Commissioner Robin Kenny and Division Director Karen Worth will share with us the 2024-26 biennial budget as it currently stands, so. I'm resisting saying from the sublime to the ridiculous, just because it's hard. It's not ridiculous, I'm just teasing.
Try going without it, right?
Right, exactly. Try not having the conversation.
Okay, we're going to jump right in. This, of course, is our continuing journey as we're talking about the biennial budget request. I'm actually going to turn it over to Karen since we'll jump right back into it. We've been talking about additional budget requests and we'll continue on that path today. We'll have some of our colleagues join us at the table to talk about some of the ABRs so you can have a little more information from each of them. And I'll actually be presenting a few ABRs today from the Office of Finance and Operations. So I'm going to let Karen kind of jump us in and here we go.
Thanks, Robin. Good afternoon, everybody. So a couple of months ago, a few months ago, we started our conversation about our 24-26 biennial budget request process. And we, we did things a little bit differently. We accelerated our conversations and we moved things a little bit quicker and boy, are we sure glad we did that. The 2023 session, House Bill 360 was passed that changes the timeline for agencies to submit their biennial budget request. So the original date to submit was by November 15th and House Bill 360 has changed that now to October 1st. So that really cuts a good six weeks off of our process time. So glad we got a little bit of a quicker jump on that. So today, what we're going to do, as Robin, as Robin said, is we're going to finish up our conversations around additional budget requests. We have four offices, Robin. We also have educator licensure and effectiveness, we have CTE with us and we have assessment and accountability. So just a, just a slide to show our budget request process where we started. We've talked through our capital six-year plan that has been submitted. We've also talked about our baseline budget, defined calculations. And then the most emphasis is of course on our ABRs because those are the most important to display what our mission and what our goal is as a board and as an agency. So I'm going to turn it over to Robin and she's going to talk about a few that are under OFO.
Okay, we're, I'm going to walk you through some additional budget requests that OFO is bringing to you today. You know, you would think that when the General Assembly passes certain legislation that requires us to do things as an agency, we would request that money to come to us and presto, we get the funds and we roll on. But that doesn't always happen. So I'm going to talk about a few today that are statutorily required, but we don't have sufficient funds to be able to fill the statutory obligations. So we'll start with OCTE and the salary schedule. OCTE is governed their compensation schedule. If you'll go back one slide, please. Thank you. So OCTE, the salary schedule portion is governed by KRS 156-808 and KAR, 780-KAR3:020. And that directs the Kentucky Board of Education to establish a salary schedule for the certified staff there at in career and technical education. The salary schedule is created by OCTE. And the additional budget requests that we're bringing as part of our package of submission is to make sure that we are adequately funded for career and technical education staff. is to make sure that we are adequately funded for career and technical education staff. They are state employees, but they don't appear in our personnel funding complement like for Frankfurt-based staff. They have their own separate appropriation, and so we're asking for an increase in that appropriation to help with recruitment and retention of those staff at career and technical education. And we've asked for $400,000 across the biennium to help us accomplish that. KSB, KSD, and the ATCs. Many of you that operate in local school districts are familiar with step and rank. Well, at KSB and KSD, we actually have statutory directive M163032 that establishes the compensation. We are actually tied for the teachers. We're tied to the Jefferson County single salary schedule, so that's what we work off. So you would think, since we're tied to that statutorily, we would receive funds each year to kind of keep on pace with that. That doesn't occur, and so we have to do an ABR to request so that we can keep up with that salary schedule. We also do not receive for either KSB, KSD, or the ATCs that step and rank amount of funding to support that. So we'll also be asking for additional funds to support that from a step and rank perspective. There's a couple of, another Educators Employment Liability Insurance Program is another ABR that was actually passed as a new program that was instituted by the General Assembly this last session. So again, a statutory mandate that happened. And in the bill, which is Senate Bill 3, they actually indicated that there would be an appropriation, but the appropriation did not happen in the short session. So there was some general conversation that in the budget session, they would come back for funding on that, but we just want to make sure that it doesn't slip off their plate, because that statutory directive is already in place. So we'll be asking for funds to support the Educators Employment Liability Insurance Program. What that bill does, it requires KDE to procure excess liability insurance coverage for teachers in our local school districts. So in most cases, school districts have their general liability insurance. It requires us to procure excess coverage on top of that. So we will actually have to put that out for a competitive bid and then have to have that contract in place by July 1st of 2024. So it's important that we have funding to support the directive of Senate Bill 3. Finally, on the slide that I'm presenting today, we have established the School Health Branch in the Office of Finance and Operations. So we learned a lot during the pandemic about the needs of our schools and our districts, our staff and our students, about health overall and being able to support from a professional development, training, and really just the requirements that they have to report to us here. We've always had people here at the department that kind of work in the school health area. Primarily in my office, it's more about the physical health. Then we also work with Dr. Kelly Foster's office in the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support from a mental health support stance. But we have decided to formalize our School Health Branch and bring all those people together. We are asking for the compensation, the salary amounts, to support that branch. We will have a branch manager, we'll have a data person, we'll have our school nurse consultant, and some of these people are already on board with us. But we're also seeking funds to have three consultants, health consultants, that would work out in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. They would be located closer to our school districts, and then they could help our school districts with sort of day-to-day questions and operations. So we are asking for funding. The branch has already been established by an administrative order executed by the Department of Education. Now we're seeking funding to help support that. Now we're going to go to Reagan Satterwhite. There's Reagan. Reagan's going to talk about two other ABRs from the Office of Career and Technical Education.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss some of the ABRs that the Office of Career and Technical Education would greatly like to prioritize. The first is some regional consultants. We're asking for four regional consultants. Currently, our office has three regional consultants who supervise specifically our 50 area technology centers. So what we are asking for in this additional budget request is for additional regional consultants who would supervise and provide technical assistance to all of Kentucky's local CTE programming, which is approximately 250 schools. There's a couple reasons for this request. The first is it's an equity issue. We would like to provide the same amount of technical assistance and support to all of our local programs as we do to our state-operated centers. Another reason is that Kentucky has greatly invested in career and technical education over the last several years. The 2022 state budget provided adequate funding for the first time ever for all CTE programming in Kentucky and allowed us to go from funding certain local area vocational educational centers and our 50 operated centers to being able to fund all CTE programming in Kentucky, which we really went from providing funding for about 96 schools to now to 316 schools. And so with this additional funding, has provided opportunities for schools to improve and expand programs as they strive to prepare students for the demands of our workforce. These additional field consultants would support districts by addressing statewide CTE initiatives in schools like which you teach, Mrs. Riley, and including their curriculum, facilities, programming, CTE accountability for career readiness, business and community engagement, and much more. In addition, these consultants would bridge the communication gaps and challenges experienced by local CTE programming, because they don't have those regional consultants that our ATCs have. We are thrilled that Kentucky General Assembly made, or that our General Assembly made Kentucky one of the first states to provide adequate funding for CTE. And we feel that these consultants would support the great work that is going on in our local programs, and it's the next step to making CTE in Kentucky a world-class system that meets Kentucky's workforce demand and fuels economic growth. The second request I'm going to discuss is a very cool opportunity that we were approached with. The KDE and the Office of Career and Technical Education was approached by the US Army with an invitation to participate in a national pilot for all of Kentucky's Army JROTC programs. Currently in Kentucky, we have 62 standalone programs, meaning they are self-governing. This pilot, in which Kentucky would be the very first to implement, would establish a Director of Army Instruction is the terminology that they use to provide oversight to all of Kentucky's JROTC programs at a state level. So the way that we envision in that is kind of as our CTE program consultants function. We have 13 consultants for our different program areas. Their Director of Army Instruction would function like that for the whole state. We believe this model would provide 50% of the salary for the Director of Army Instruction and support staff would be provided by the federal government, the US Army. And they have asked the Kentucky Department of Education to come up with the additional 50% of the salary and the benefits associated with this person's position. They would be responsible for all of the travel and any other expenses that are incurred. KDE and the Office of Career and Technical Education leaderships greatly believes that participating in this pilot program would be a critical step in providing support to our many programs in the state for JROTC. And likewise, we feel that this wonderful opportunity, this is a wonderful opportunity to demonstrate the Commonwealth's commitment to our armed forces and our support. Turn it back over to you.
Reagan, how many JROTC positions were there?
And so in the model that the Army has recommended, they have one Director of Army Instruction and five additional support staff for this person. So in total, it would be six positions.
And would they be based out of the Sauer Building?
We have had some conversations about that. They really want this person to be involved with the KDE staff in the Office of Career and Technical Education. They would like a Frankfurt-based staff person in the KDE. However, this person's going to have a lot of equipment, and as we know, storage space is hard to come by in this building. So they would be at another location in Frankfurt. Probably the Director of Army Instruction would be, and then some of their support staff could be here in the Sauer Building, because they wouldn't need that corresponding storage space.
And on the four consultants, the regional folks, I assume this is, these are positions that could be funded by Perkins, but Perkins is expended out over the course of the next two years. This would be over and above what Perkins would allow?
This is over and above what Perkins would allow.
And how do you deploy regional folks?
Meaning how would we?
Yeah, are they field-based? They live in their communities? They report remotely to Sauer?
They would likely be remote employees, because we'd love them to be able to be in the field as much as possible. They would function similarly to our CTE program area consultants, who are remote workers, because they are in the classrooms in the Commonwealth over 50% of their time.
Other questions for Reagan? I know you still have some more, maybe. Sure.
Have Byron come up and join us? Talk about an ABR from the Office of Educator Licenseur and Effectiveness. This is the next generation's leadership support.
Good afternoon, we're members, and welcome, Ms. Riley. It's good to have you here. I feel like this is a bit of a high school mindset, where content is king. And so a lot of high school people feel that mine's the most important one. So I don't envy you in your decisions here, and I wish you the best of luck. Certainly, we've talked a little bit about the other priorities as far as the workforce goes, and you all are very well aware of the concerns and the needs that are out there, and I'm most appreciative. There's also certainly a need for leadership support as well. We add, the focus is on the teacher workforce, as it should be. But certainly, we know that good schools come with good leadership. And in a lot of cases, the culture around the buildings and the individuals within the schools stay or leave in accordance with the atmosphere within that school, which is largely contingent upon the leadership that is set into place there. Sadly, as most of you all are very well aware and probably participated in, perhaps at some point, the Kentucky Principal Internship Program concluded in 2009. And since then, there hasn't been any formal or systemic means of supporting particularly new administrators that go into the field. Certainly, we have our K groups that have assisted in certain ways, and there are some co-op, regional cohorts that have done so. But, you know, it's done in accordance with where an individual happens to land. Certainly, districts have done exceptional work in supporting new administrators. But also, again, it just depends on where individuals land. So this is just really an attempt to commit to the support of new school leaders as they enter into primarily principal roles and sort of return again, as we've talked a lot about, a revised, for the lack of a better term to use, K-TIP, but a new mentoring induction system for teachers. Also, just focusing back on the new mentoring induction and coaching of our new administrators and principals within buildings. So I trust you all, you all are very well of these roles, as many of you all are performing and have performed them and served in coaching and mentoring roles. So I trust you will make the most informed decision that we can.
Thank you. So I see 10 and a half million over the biennium, but four pretty different OELE requests. So how does that work on your end of things, Robin, when you send in a bundle of OELE under one lump sum? For instance, I might be really inclined to lean into hearing more about a new teacher internship model and all that entails. But I don't, I can't tell from this what chunk of the 10 and a half million that might be.
Yeah, so, you know, it's always a bit of a strategy conversation about how we submit our budget requests, our additional budget requests. You know, right now, we hear a lot about recruitment and retention of professionals in our school districts. And it will be a decision for the board to think about, do you want us to ask for each of these ABRs individually? Or do we want to bundle them together and advocate as far as funding from a broader thematic stance, like recruitment and retention of our professionals in our school districts? So we can do it either way. OELE has kind of chunked out each of the things and how they would spend that money. But we could easily roll it all together, call it recruitment and retention. And once that money comes to us, if we get the ABR in a big lump sum, it does give us a little more flexibility within that total additional budget request to kind of move the money back and forth. So if we ask for it and we get it as a line item, and it's only for, let's just take the first one, Ed Rising. You know, if we ask for that and we get a line item that says you can only use it for Ed Rising, then we don't have that flexibility. So sometimes when Karen and I see things that look more thematic, we try to bundle them together so that we'll have a little more flexibility if we get that additional budget request funded.
Super helpful. And I can't help but think an item under the heading Teacher Recruitment and Retention would be a sexy item right now. So, yeah.
Well, I do believe there's a lot of interest in that right now. Now, when we go and talk about it, of course, we would explain the components and how we intend on using the funding, but we may not break it down as singular to each individual line.
Okay. So Byron, on the new K-TIP, the old K-PIP is not actually mentioned in the description there, so.
Correct. And there's just some debate, should we depart from the language? Should we, in discussion of the portfolios earlier, you know, ideally, we.
I survived K-PIP.
You know, it's debatable. There's a legacy there that I.
Not mine.
Open to how we want to name this. It certainly can represent the legacy that exists for both of those programs. Ideally, we, like all things you all talk about, you know, we can improve on this now. We know sort of the benefits and the best areas that were most beneficial. So the naming rights, I guess, could be debated, but we're certainly open to either just sort of distancing it by using a different language or keeping it maintaining with, and that's in statute too. So we have that that is still grounded there, but open to feedback in terms of the language that would be preferred.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure, and Byron kind of touched on, you know, some of this is in statutory language, if not funded. And so as we look at the budget request in conjunction with the existing statute, there may be a desire to kind of look at statutory amendments or revisions as well based upon kind of the direction that you want these programs to go in the future. So we may be doing that in parallel.
Yeah, and I may be too weedy, Jason, but my question becomes, if we don't rely on old K-TIP in the statute, and we're fortunate enough to get this funding, you can't hit the ground running July 1 or next July 1 with a new system that hasn't been designed yet. So how do you reconcile that hiccup?
That's where it's probably beneficial to build on the legacy of the K-PIP model. But we would, we would just want to.
I don't think it's K-TIP.
Well, K-TIP, right, right. It will be, we'll need to put forth the revised version of it for the expectations, the roles. And a lot of that, of course, is contingent upon the level of funding as to, you know, which, what role. When you have the team of the principal, your mentor teacher, cooperative teacher, and then you have the university. Right. So you had that triad that was designed. I mean, I think there's a lot of importance still to that as long as there's an ability to support it financially. So we kind of depend, I bet, on the contingencies of the funding that's available.
Because that's going to take a lot of retraining and new training just to, you know, get some folks ready to deploy.
You have some capacity here, because over the past few years with our COVID relief funding, we've stood up a smaller version of this across the state with. teacher education programs. So so we, it's not like we don't have any capacity anymore.
Okay.
Right. Rebuilt that over with A R P and S R funds. Yeah. Thanks for thanks for adding that in. And we also have an evaluation of the COVID money for the new teacher support forthcoming as well. So we'll get feedback based on, you know, the limited role that was able to play, but we will have an evaluation of what the different co-ops and higher eds were able to accomplish with the COVID relief fund. So there's a platform to jump from. Certainly, a lot of details and specifics necessary, but it it won't be starting completely anew, if you will.
Yes, Patrice. So you mentioned K P I Ps. So I'm assuming that's Kentucky principal.
Yes.
In terms. My question is, we know our situation with our teachers. We're kept pretty well versed in the data surrounding that. But what about our principals, our leadership? Do we have data on not simply retiring principals, but principals that are leaving the profession?
It it, they mirror one another similarly. And it, a lot of, while again, the conversation does need to root focus on our teachers and that the administrative end is has been a little bit caught in the middle, in the gray area, if you will. But there there's calls for concern in just the entry into the programs. Just like the Ed Prep, you see, you see declining numbers over over time. And then a dip occurring, you know, in the last five years as well. So the so the pipeline is it, as we call it, is also suffering in terms of entering into knowing that there will be more exiting than there will be that are being prepared. So sadly, unfortunately, great similarities between the two in terms of administrative pipeline.
Oh, I demonstrate. Okay. All right, back to Karen and.
There's Rhonda. I was looking this way.
Even though.
So you all have talked a lot about assessment today.
I was gonna say.
So.
And I I did hear the chair's comment that that was a sexy topic. This would not be a sexy topic.
Maybe not so, but.
But it is a topic with a lot of interest, however, with assessment accountability. And we're in a really a timing situation. Our current contracts to do the state required and the federal required pieces will be expiring. And we have to go through a re-bid process of procurement process. I worked to keep these ladies very happy, so we follow the rules for procurement. And we will need to have new contracts in place by June, I think it is, and July one of twenty four. Of twenty four. And so we are a bit concerned about just inflationary factor. You know, everything has gone up in cost. So what we're bringing forward to you really is just an eight percent inflationary matter. But we also know within these next two years, we'll need to do some work to support the new and moving toward the new. And so that that is the the basis really for the request. Again, inflationary and particularly within the two years, we anticipate we will have more details locked down in place. The kind of level of detail you need to procure processes and and vendor partners on things. Part of this cost, it's not for any one contract. We have multiple contracts. So like the contract with the Center for Assessment. And you've mentioned them several times today. That would be a piece of this work as well. So this is not like a a contract just for like a prime vendor. There are multiple pieces that we require them all to do. And then we have the center as our thinking partners and working partners moving forward.
And so the price tag just represents the eight percent inflationary.
Right. It's the eight percent inflationary. So it's basically adding a million to each year. And so it's it's really just an eight percent for inflationary, but with the notion that we need to carve out some things within probably this two-year period because I'll talk in terms as well, the contracts expire typically after six years. So you don't commit to six years. It's a two-year initial contract. You can change those contracts at any point in that process as new things come available and you would rebid and resubmit. But it's a two-year start and then you can renew them two times. So we have done all the renewal that can be done. So it's time to rebid and procure. And so we would obviously have to have as our base what's currently required by law. But then we would want to make sure we have some space in there to support the initial work of moving forward as well.
And obviously, as we go out to bid, we'll get better information on pricing.
We would.
And as we roll along with those renewals, we will also have additional budgetary sessions that can, you know, as we learn more about the pricing, when it what it looks like. So you'll be seeing this item in years to come.
That's right. And as again, there's more as as the call to action becomes an implementation, then there is obviously opportunity to come back and rebid and bid differently for what we might need and require.
Okay, let's get to the big spreadsheets. So all along the way, we've kind of talked about A B Rs, additional budget requests, and we've talked conceptually about them. We've shared information from all our offices about what they are bringing forward as additional budget requests. And so now we've costed out those items for you, so you can kind of see at least our initial projections on what we think they will look like. Karen, do you want to talk about any of the items specifically in the spreadsheet?
No, like we we kind of talked about a little bit earlier, we've grouped them in no particular way. Sometimes we group them by office just to kind of keep the flow of the chart going. Other times we'll try to group them together by the work, but O E L E is a perfect example. You could pick and choose the things that we wanted to ask for, but those were so under that umbrella of recruitment and retention. We felt that we could, we could kind of put those together. Also, wanted to share that they these are not in any kind of priority order. We they've just been listed as we've received them in from offices. So there is no priority here on these charts.
I do want to note on the O F O SEEK base, you know, we have an amount there. Again, we applied an inflationary factor to that, so it has an eight percent inflationary factor. However, as part of building the budget request for SEEK, we work with the Office of the State Budget Director in a consensus forecasting scenario. We do that across the summer. So staff from our office, the Office of the State Budget Director and the Department of Revenue actually tried to look at the information, the data inputs, some actual, some that we're trying to forecast a little bit for the next two years. So we've applied an eight percent based upon what we are funded at right now. That might change a little bit. You know, enrollment is doing some things. We've got different numbers that we're already seeing for exceptional child counts that are a little different. So we actually put all that along with the economist at the Office of the State Budget Director and we we build that number for SEEK together. So we've kind of put in that eight percent. It may go up a little bit. It may go down a little bit, but we've just kind of put that in as a placeholder. Well, actually, we're actually in the middle of doing the SEEK forecasting right now with the Office of the State Budget Director and providing data to them. And we walk away from it. We look at the data and then we come back together and then eventually get to a number based upon all those data inputs. So that number may change a little bit one way or another.
So you don't look at the four thousand two per student or what's the number this year?
Forty two hundred.
Forty two hundred.
Sorry. Forty forty two hundred and increase that by eight percent.
No, because the forty two hundred.
Tendence.
You know, as we know, that's not really all the state portion. You know, that that per people guarantee is a combination of state and local funds. So we don't just take that number and add the eight percent to it. We look at our total appropriation, add the eight percent to it, the general fund appropriation and add the eight percent to it.
And then how do you handle the add-ons?
Um, well, for the eight percent, they're included in that. So, yeah. But but we also know that those numbers are changing a little bit. So again, it may go up or down a little bit. It's but we will, whatever we number we arrive, we finally get to, we will then add the eight percent on top of that.
Okay.
Lou, I've got a question.
Yes, please.
So this is additional budgetary request. Where's the money coming from? Is it coming from a different, taken away from some place and getting from another or I'm new at this budgeting?
It's a really good question. So additional budget requests, of course, the Commonwealth has rev, you know, they'll come up with the amount of revenue that is available to all of state government. And then the General Assembly has to decide how it's going to be carved up. We always, agencies start with our base budget. And so whatever funds we have right now, at least historically, the way it's worked, never say never. But we keep our base budget. And so any additional budget request would be on top of our base. So all state government agencies are all competing for those additional budget request dollars. And, you know, the Department of Education, along with education overall, usually receives a pretty significant portion of the general fund budget. But of course, we're competing with the Cabinet for Health and Family Services and prison and, you know, all the other services that happen in state government. So the General Assembly has to kind of decide which is which priorities are are more important to them.
All those people that corner their legislators and the elevators on the, that's who we're competing against.
So so we provide the spreadsheets for you because we have a little homework for you. And we're going to wind down our discussion for today and get you get you on schedule here. Some backdrops, as you all look at the spreadsheet and what we've already provided to you as you reflect on what we've already discussed. But a couple of backdrops, if it's on our list, either you or the General Assembly through a mandate or the Department of Education has said, this is important to us, right? We value, these are things that we think we need to obtain to be able to support school districts, students, staff, et cetera. So if it's on the list, it's important. So they're all important, right? But we have to prioritize when we submit our budget request. We have to prioritize. We've got eighteen or twenty on here already. So it's a hard task. What we would like for you to do when you come back to us in August, if you can come up with your top three out of all these. Now, usually what happens when we come back, it slips to about five. But if you can try to come up with your top three, and then we're going to talk about that. What it does in addition to the exercise that Karen has to do in putting it in the system and prioritize, it helps the department know what you really want us to advocate for. We'll advocate for all of it. But it it allows us to be a little more strategic in understanding which ones you really want us to try to focus on as we enter into the next biennial budget session. Do not let the size of the dollar amount dissuade you from saying it should be a top priority. When you think about, we have to do something that helps one hundred and seventy-one districts or six hundred and thousand students, the numbers get big really fast. So don't let that dissuade you when you look at a great big number and say, oh, we can't put that number one. Likewise, if it's something that has a smaller dollar amount, don't don't look at that in the negative either. Some and also remember, sometimes it takes multiple budget requests or submissions in order for something to get funded. We know that through the capital projects, the K S B and K S D, we know that. So it is as important for us to ask for it and create that history of any A B Rs so that the General Assembly will know it continues to be something that is important on our plate. So I provide those kind of as some backdrop comments as you kind of consider your priorities and how we can best move our budget forward on behalf of the Commonwealth.
I noticed that we don't have anything related to K S B or K S D this time, or did I miss that?
We have the salary, seven rank increases. We do not have anything really, and nothing that came forward from that office as far as needs for those schools from a operations perspective.
Swimming pool.
We have the swimming pool.
And in the past, we have had a pretty large number around universal preschool.
So that is one thing I noticed as you were doing your call to action a little bit earlier and looking at your document. We do not have anything yet for universal preschool. So if that's something, we still have time. If you'd like to add universal preschool and ask us to cost that out, we have done that in the past and it's fairly easy for us to update. So we're happy to do that. But right now, we don't have anything for universal.
Like this.
And I'm looking at Patrice.
And I don't make eye contact with her. Okay, thank you. And I know Sharon and I and Lee kind of jumped in on this conversation today, have had this conversation about what it might look like under O E L E's budget, for example, to offer a higher ed district partnership around the development of master teacher models. Just thinking about how we can seize the opportunity to think about working conditions and the profession under the recruitment and retention of teachers. I'm thinking a fairly small ticket item, but that might be something that if we put our heads together and think about what that might look like, we might throw into the mix. I know you can't, we can't each have a boutique A B R, but something like that under teacher recruitment and retention might be helpful.
Okay.
Other questions for Robin and Karen Lee?
Is there any information on O T L breakouts? I don't understand. I see the REACH is succeed as an align item. And my question is, the science standards are coming out soon. We're asking teachers to teach children how to think rather than regurgitate. They add engineering, which most teachers don't know how to describe what an engineer does. Is there anything targeted? We've put a lot of money into the career and technical, and I applaud that. We'll be very good at putting people's parts together. Someday, we got to do our own thing and make our own parts.
Yeah, there is actually a request from O T L, one point two million around the content standards.
Is that just for the science content standards or is there?
It's for additional consultants that would be subject specific. And then also for teacher stipend to pay teachers to to work on those standards. And science would be the next, but then then the others that come in that cycle, they would be able to address those as well.
And the the professional learning line item is fairly large. Is that professional development or what?
Yeah, that's the old Flex Focus P D, what we. So so Flex Focus is a group of five grants that we receive at the department have received since probably the early two thousands or maybe even before. That includes your preschool.
High quality instructional resources, number two, right?
That's that would be our text, the old textbook.
Also inflexible focus.
Yeah, and those are, and those grants are, you have the ability at a school district level to flex those funds between those grants. So if you have a higher need in an E S S area, you could pull some money from your Safe Schools grant and move it over to your E S S. That's the concept behind Flex Focus. So the eleven point nine for professional learning would reinstate or restore those, that formula and send that those dollars out to to districts. Then there's some additional money there, I believe, for. Robin, help me on that one. That was the additional for the R F P.
Yeah, that's for a new system.
New system.
Yeah, so that we could kind of have all those professional development opportunities in one place. And and what I think is particularly exciting about that, it would be for both certified and classified staff. And so if if certified or classified staff in our districts are looking for professional development opportunities, they would come and they would hit that system and be able to get professional development opportunities that way. So that includes in the professional learning, in addition to the Flex Focus, it would be money for a system as well to support that.
Was there a fiscal note on the educator employment liability insurance? We have any notion about what that would cost?
No, there was not. And actually, we're having to do a little bit of research to see what that would look like because when you put it out for bid for excess liability, of course, those vendors want to know the underlying general liability underneath it. So we'll have.
That varies by district.
Yes, exactly. That's the hard part because we'll have to figure out what every district has before, so that we can inform those vendors that are bidding on the excess coverage. Yeah, that was one that we didn't access.
The school systems, every one of them too, to try to.
Yeah. So we'll have to do a survey or something to get more information from our districts before we can put that out.
Just for our exercise there, you said you want us to come back with those priorities for office. So how do we rank these priorities? Do we say what our ones are, what our twos are, threes are, or you go from one to fifteen or what do we do?
We have Meredith ping us, work with you on how you want to get that information and ping us a couple of times before the August meeting. We have Meredith ping us, work with you on how you want to get that information and ping us a couple of times before the August meeting. Great question. I was wondering the same thing, Randy, about how we would, you know, do it in such a way that it makes, makes it analyzable on your part. All right.
Thank you very much for your participation today.
Thank you so much. All right. Ahora es un placer presentar al programa de inmersión en español de Shelby County Schools. Old Spanish teacher had one shot. So with us today, this delightful team is with the Office of Associate Commissioner Dr. Kelly Foster, Policy Advisor Dr. Matthew Courtney, and KEA President Eddie Campbell, along with our beloved Superintendent of Shelby County Schools Sally Sugg and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Adam Hicks. So I've been anxiously waiting to hear an update on the program, so I'll turn it over to the team.
Well, good afternoon. You just put me in a complete panic mode because as an English major, I had to have lots of hours of Spanish, go figure. And I was like, oh my, I didn't, I wasn't ready for that. I'll stick to English. Well, thank you, guys. We're very excited to share this wonderful opportunity that is going on in Shelby County. We have some guests with us today that I would like to introduce. We have Shelby County Superintendent Dr. Sally Sugg, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Adam Hicks, KEA President Eddie Campbell, and of course, my policy advisor, Matthew Courtney. And so we started this project in the fall of 2020 in OCIS, really looking at the needs of our ESL students across the state and what type of support that they were receiving and how we could improve those supports and actually help districts. And so Matthew and some other staff members started a research project in OCIS. And we quickly realized after looking at that data that we really needed to find a way to immerse the educators with people that speak the language on a daily basis and learn from that opportunity and try to build that in classrooms. And so we have done a little bit of piloting in different cohorts. And now we are working with Shelby. And the program that the office has been working with is baseline. And I'm going to turn it over to Matthew and he's going to tell you a little bit about our partnership with baseline and how we've used that over the previous cohorts and how we ended up with this partnership with KEA in Shelby County.
Thank you. And so as Dr. Foster said, this really started with our work around targeted support and improvement schools and additional targeted support and improvement schools. And really thinking about how do we help schools who have large populations of English learners to grow and innovate and achieve in a new way. And our schools were telling us, these are the things we're doing. They were doing all the things that we knew to tell them. And so we said, this is really an opportunity for us as a state agency to innovate around how we prepare educators to work with English learners and our youth, our immigrant and migrant youth as well in that category. We also said, this is also an opportunity for us to explore and model some evidence-based practice development. Evidence-based practices are enshrined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and in the same sections of school improvement. And so we always talk about those two things together. And so we said, okay, if we're going to innovate, we're going to also model this process. And we're going to try to be really intentional about collecting data, publishing our results and being very transparent about the work that we're doing. So I'm going to take you through very briefly the iterations that we've already accomplished to bring us to this point today. So our first model in the spring of 2020, we worked with four building-level administrators. We actually went to the US Department of Education, received special permission to use some of our Title III English learner funds to do this experiment. We put them through this program and collected data through qualitative interviewing. And we used a coding protocol to try to understand how the program really helped them grow as administrators in buildings with a high number of English learners. The baseline program is really unique and it's really perfectly situated for the work that we were trying to accomplish because the underlying logic model of this work, we wanted to create some professional development opportunities around multicultural education and building up sort of confidence and competency in working with diverse learners. And so this program is an online Spanish immersion program. It is delivered over 80 hours, two hours a day, five days a week for eight weeks. Our participants are paired one-on-one with a Spanish instructor who is living in a Latin American country. And the literature in this area tells us that we need professional development that is long-term, that is simulation-based and includes intensive contact with a native speaker or someone from culturally diverse background. And so the baseline grammarless program really checked all the boxes. After our first round of qualitative interviewing, what we found is that all of those building leaders loved the program, which is always a great thing to hear from a professional learning. They experienced deeper empathy for their students. They expressed a better understanding for the challenges day-to-day of, that their students faced. All of them changed either a practice, a program or curriculum in their building in response to their experience. My favorite quote from that time, one of our principals said, I understand now why our EL students smile so much. Because I would get out of my class and my face would hurt and I realized I was just smiling to get through the lesson and that's what my kids do. So this experience really opened their minds. We said, this is great. This is exactly what we wanted. So let's do another improvement cycle, another study. So in round two, we brought on 50 educators from the classroom to central office and kind of every space in between. And what we learned from that study is that, boy, we needed some help. 50 educators was a lot to run through this with our existing staff. So at that point, we went to our partners at the Kentucky Education Association and said, we want to do another cohort. We want you to help us. In cohort three, KEA provided us with first funding for the project through a grant they received from the National Education Association. They also provided us with some support staff and a learning management system so that we could log all of our people in and we could track their individual progress through the program. What we wanted to do in that sample, we had all these classroom teachers. We said, okay, the principals had this huge change in belief and confidence. So can we quantify that? So in round three, we used a self-efficacy survey methodology. And we were able to document a statistically significant and positive change in self-efficacy for multicultural education through this presentation. That also allowed us to declare that baseline is an evidence-based practice that meets the minimum requirements and standards under the federal law. And we thought that was really encouraging, so we wanted to expand again. So we went back to KEA and we said, okay, we want to expand this partnership. We want to continue what we're doing, but we also want to embed in a district. And we want to learn what would this look like in a district as a district-run pilot. And so KEA again received funding from the National Education Association to allow us to continue this experiment. KEA brought us Shelby County, and so we think Shelby County is a great group for us to partner with. And so we're in our current cycle where we're actually looking at two evidence-based investigations here. First, we're looking to see if those changes in teacher beliefs that we observed in the last cycle lead to changes in teacher behavior, which is what we're looking at here. So all of our teachers in Shelby County will be going through a series of classroom observations. So we're going to be monitoring for changes in teaching behaviors before and after they have this experience. Shelby County has also loaned us a bunch of classified staff. And so they will be the first classified staff to participate in this program across the state. And we'll be doing qualitative interviewing with them, again, to create evidence that we can share in the field so that local school districts across the state and across the country who are challenged with this will have some evidence to build their programs off of in the future. So that's where we are today. We're here with our awesome partners. So I'm going to pass first to KEA President Eddie Campbell to talk a little bit about their partnership and then we'll hear from Shelby County.
Thank you, Dr. Courtney. Chair Young, Distinguished Movement Board, Dr. Glass. Glad to be here today. Glad to be a part of this partnership. It has been an amazing journey. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Eddie Campbell. I'm a middle and high school music teacher, nationally board certified from Knox County, currently on release, serving as president of the Kentucky Education Association. Part of our mission at KEA is to advocate for support, advocate for and support public schools to ensure quality public education for every Kentucky student. We accomplish this in many, many ways, but most directly is through professional learning opportunities that we can provide to educators all across the state. Not just our members, but we open up our professional learning to all educators. We know that professional learning empowers educators to own their profession, gives them the tools that they need to grow as professionals, but also helps educators to meet students where they are. When Dr. Courtney and I first started talking about this Spanish acquisition work that he was doing with principals, it was a real small, small-scale study with just four principals, I think, when it began. As we were talking about this work, I was very intrigued. And we discussed how this would be a perfect opportunity to really apply the evidence-based learning practices that are a part of the Every Student Succeeds Act and really have educators own their profession through that. One of the barriers in accomplishing, as you know, a wide-scale study is funding, funding the project. So I began looking around through grant opportunities and reached out to my colleagues at the National Education Association. And we found some grant opportunities through the great public schools, NEA's great public schools. Once I determined that there were grants there, I reached out to Dr. Foster and said, hey, I'd love if we could partner on this. I think we can get these grants. Is it okay to move forward and apply for these? So I did, or KEA did rather. And what has bloomed out of that is not only a partnership between KDE and KEA, but it's also with educators across the state of Kentucky, practicing classroom educators, and then now with Shelby County. So in our baseline, baseline partners. So it's a great opportunity to really show and grow how these partnerships work together. Just a little information about NEA's Great Public Schools grants. They're available to advance the goal of great public schools for every student. Our great public schools fundings are intended to help NEA state and local affiliates enhance the quality of public education by developing and implementing and leading work that engages members that emphasize, that are, with an emphasis on student-centered success. When I applied for the grants, the first one, we received those $50,000 that allowed for over 50 educators to participate in the, the third round of the cohort. And then as Dr. Courtney and I spoke about moving this forward, I applied for another grant and was given another $30,000, awarded another $30,000 to do our work in Shelby County. So I'm very excited about that. So these grants will allow for another additional 25 educators. And as you heard, we're going to have education support professionals that will be participating in this project this time also. Because we know it takes everybody in the school to make sure that students are being successful. The results of the project so far have been profound, profound. You've heard Dr. Courtney talk about that. Educators who have participated in the Spanish Learning Project report transformation in their engagement with their EL Spanish-speaking students. Many report, many reports report that it has changed the climate and culture in their classroom. It has changed the engagement with their students and even impacted their approach, approach to teaching and learning, not for their, just for their EL students, but for all their students in their classroom. And if you'll indulge me just to share a quick story. One of our participants, when she was going through the program, she came from a zero, she had zero experience speaking, speaking Spanish. And as you heard, it's an eight-week program, two hours a day, five days a week. It's very intense. And you are fully immersed as you're going through these lessons, one-on-one with your baseline teacher. She said, I was overwhelmed. She was absolutely overwhelmed. She goes, because they would ask me questions and I would have to think and process in Spanish into English, then back into Spanish to give my response. And she said, it took me a while to get that down. And she goes, I realized it was like a light bulb came on. I, my students go through this every single day and they need to process. They need time to process. So she said, it has really affected how I work with my EL students speaking Spanish in my class and to give them time to process and not to be frustrated when they don't immediately answer. So it has totally transformed how she teaches her classes. So I just wanted to share that story because I thought it was so inspiring. There are lots of stories that we could share. As I mentioned, this project is showing learning that goes well beyond just basic instruction, delivering a basic instruction. It's allowing our educators to meet their students where they are, build trust with our students and then break down those communication barriers, not only with their students, but with their parents, which is really important to make sure that our students are supported all the way around. We're excited to see what the future brings with our partnership with Shelby County because I think this is going to really truly move us not only outside of the classroom and the school building, but to move us into the community and how we can support our students, not only in the building, but outside into the community. So in closing, I would just like to, just to say that the Kentucky Education Association is committed to supporting members and educators in all aspects of our professions, including the breaking down of communication barriers that exist when working with students and families that speak a different language. And this project was a perfect example of that. We've learned through the project that by enhancing educator language skills, in this case, Spanish, that we can start to move to close those achievement gaps for our students, make deeper connections to the families and really connect to the communities in ways that will strengthen the relationships and fostering learning for all of our students across the Commonwealth. So I want to thank Dr. Foster and Dr. Courtney and our new partners here in Shelby County. And I hope, and this is my hope, that this will open up opportunities and title funding for other districts around the state to really give this opportunities to their educators, but most importantly, to give this opportunity for learning for our students. Thank you.
Good afternoon. We're so excited to be here and tell you about our new partnership and what we hope for and what we've already seen, actually, over the last couple of years. I was in Shelby County. This is my second stint there. And I left in 2008 to actually come to the Department of Education. And when I left, we had about 50% of our preschool students that identified as Hispanic, coming from a Hispanic family. And when I came back, it's 85%. And Shelby County is one of the most friendly, welcoming places you will ever find. There's not any one industry that draws them. It's because when they've come to our community, they have found that we reach out to them and include them in a lot of different ways. And I want to thank our community partners for doing that. But a couple of years ago, I came back during the pandemic to lead the district. One of our principals came to me and said, I'm going to do this program. And it's two hours a day, five days a week, after I've been a principal all day long. And I said, Shannon, what are you thinking? How are you going to do that? But that altruistic growth mindset is, is something that is really contagious. She was amazed. And what I can say, I really thought what we would see would be the obvious things. That family connection, that ability to connect with students on a different level. But what I heard from her actually dove into the intellectual capacity that the students had and how it changed in structure for her to, to help the teachers. She talked about students and their processing of math problems and how their language and the language we use, the syntax, how we teach math was totally different. So students may understand the concepts if they were spoken to in their native language. So that really changed my mind that it wasn't just a feel-good type of a program, but it can impact instruction. We have currently about one in four students that identify as Hispanic. So they're not all EL students, but they go home to that culture. And many of them have Spanish-speaking-only families. So it does definitely have that impact. The piece that I am the most overwhelmed by is our staff. When we threw out this, this process that we were talking about and we gave them upfront the number of hours that would be dedicated to it. I really talked with Dr. Hicks and I said, we're going to have to kind of recruit some people to, to apply for this, I believe. We had over 60 classified and certified staff members. And I think that's because one of our six core values is growth mindset. So bus drivers, cooks, custodians, principals, teachers, instructional assistants. 60, over 60 of them applied and we had to go through a process of elimination because we could only take around, I think it's around 25. So I think that speaks really highly to not only our growth mindset as a district, but also the people in our district, we have more than one now, that have been through baseline and have been cheerleaders for the program and talked about how it changed their attitude. It changed the way they think about our Hispanic students. And so we're really excited to come back maybe later and share with the results with. And so we're really excited to come back maybe later and share with the the results with you about that program. But once again, thank you so much for the opportunity. We're excited about partnering to get this done for our students and our families.
Once again, thank you for the opportunity. We wanted to highlight the success and the partnership between Shelby and KEA and KDE. But the most exciting part is that, you know, this is now, we are now able to allow other districts to use their federal funds to participate this, participate on their own. So it doesn't have to always be a department-driven professional learning opportunity. So we also wanted to give it a little airtime so districts could hear about it and also be able to follow up with questions. So once again, thanks for your time and we'll be glad to take any questions.
Congratulations. You had me at Ola. So. Dr. Courtney, have you approached review board and what's the dissemination on the study going to look like? We got to get the word out.
So that's a great question. So the first qualitative study is already in print in the Journal for Multicultural Education.
Excellent.
The cycle three study is accepted for publication. And this morning I checked that it is in formatting. So any day, we'll be able to share that as well. And we will pursue publication as well for the work that we're doing in Shelby County. We think it's really important to document that, to model for districts that, you know, these kinds of evidence creation projects do not have to be the big, grand longitudinal projects that we see coming out of the University of Kentucky, for example. They can really be homegrown thoughtful data collection, and that creates evidence, that creates innovation, and then we can spread that. So we're really hoping to model that and make that available to districts.
Excellent. Sounds like Plan Do Study Act, right?
Very, very similar.
Nice. Other questions for the team? They'll take them in Spanish or in English.
Well, it was thrilling for me to hear the real concrete examples of folks realizing how language can be a barrier when you think you're being abundantly clear with a learner. And, you know, simply being able to engage in their native language facilitates their learning. And I think it's, you know, it's good to hear. And I, I hope that your participants will become missionaries and and tell their story more broadly because, you know, folks need to understand this is not a matter of being nice. This is, it's not simply, it's not only a matter of being nice, it's a matter of being a competent professional.
And to Matthew's earlier point about the goal of this being something that's more self-sustainable, it's certainly going to end up being that way in our district. As Dr. Sugg mentioned, we had over 60 people who applied, bus drivers, front office staff, et cetera. And so initially, when Dr. Courtney and I and Eddie, the three of us discussed this idea, it was geared specifically towards certified teachers. So I just appreciate their flexibility with helping us realize that when one out of every four students in Shelby County are Hispanic, we, Spanish needs to be universally accepted throughout our district. And so to your point, yeah, we're, we're just excited about the opportunity to be able to to positively impact kids. I mean, when we have bus drivers who say, I've got to do this. I want to be able to engage with my families. I want to be able to talk to mom when she opens the door, to be able to tell her how great her day was with her son. Like that's, there's nothing better than that.
And Sally, you touched on this a little, to the empathy that an adult experiences when they put themselves in the vulnerable position of learning a language and their young learners already speak that language. There's something really special in that place between an adult and a learner. So I'm, I'm excited to see where you go from here.
Empathy is also one of our core values. And I think that's another reason we had so many that signed up for the program.
The sore face story goes a long way to talk about what that empathy feels like in action. So.
Oh, so, so like with the, the group of 50 from across the state, was that just in random? Like, did they apply for that? Or was it just people that were interested?
They did. So with our initial cohort, we put out a statewide application. And so we picked those four principals. That was very competitive because we had almost 100 applicants. And so that second round of 50 was from that initial pool of applicants.
So it'll be really interesting to see the impact when it's kind of concentrated in one district like that. That's, that's exciting.
Yeah, we're really excited to understand too, since we are opening these federal funds up for districts to stand up their own cohorts, to be able to understand what does it take to support a district in that. We have learned a lot just today. As we've had some people who started their courses today in Shelby County, Dr. and I've been emailing and texting, trying to get people signed up. That's important experience. It's going to help us help districts later. So we're really grateful to them.
I can see where school climate will really be good for.
Oh, yeah.
They do. Kids have to feel special. They get that.
And my mom's been a teacher for over 20 years. And the past six or seven, she's actually an ESL teacher now, not in Kentucky. So sorry about that. She's in, she's in Cincinnati Public Schools in Ohio. And she, I remember when she first started, didn't know Spanish at all. And now anytime I'm on the phone with her, when she's in class, she's like, give me a second. Then she like switches. And it's like, I, I'd never seen her speak Spanish ever. And I added a note to tell her about this program, to take it to her school in her county, because she tells them about her other teachers who work with her that have no idea how to communicate with their students. And it, for her, that she can understand and speak, and also the other teachers who can, it's like extra workload on them to let the teachers that don't know how to speak and don't know how to connect, like give them tip, tips and tricks that how to connect with the students. So programs like this are going to change ESL completely. So I'm really glad that we're doing that here in Kentucky.
Yeah, thank you for that. And one thing I didn't mention earlier, our, our first cohort, we had those four administrators take a standardized oral proficiency interview at the end. And so over the course of that eight weeks, they earned, they learned, acquired the equivalent of two years of high school Spanish. So it really, even at that communication level, and this program is really doing a lot for our teachers.
All right. Excellent. Thank you all so much. All right. United We Learn, Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd, and now the official United We Learn Chair, Audrey Gilbert.
Right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Right. We just have a few little updates for you today. Let me start off with just a little bit of the makeup of the, the council. We currently have 72 people on the, on the council. Can you get to the next slide, Meredith? Thank you. Okay. So we currently have 72 people, 72 members on here. They meet twice a year in the spring and in the fall. We have 72 because we, we started off with 75 and throughout the year, we occasionally have folks drop off or people joining. I will say that this summer, we're going to be putting out a, a request for everyone to basically re-up their membership. We asked everybody for a one-year commitment. We know that a lot of folks are going to want to continue, but we want to make sure that the expectations are really clear. So we're asking them to recommit for the next year. And we'll then look at the membership and see, do we still have a good cross-representation from all of the different stakeholder groups? Are we still graphically, or graphically, geographically diverse across the state? Do we still have a good representation from all ages and genders and races, all that kind of stuff? So we'll reevaluate all of that once we find out who's staying on and if we need to recruit for more members. As Chair Young stated, we did have our election for the new chair and vice chair of the council. And so Audrey continues as our chair, and we have Sarah Hatton as our vice chair of the council. And we continue to have three standing committees that meet on a monthly basis. So I will turn it over to Audrey and she's going to talk about those three standing committees and what they've been doing.
So I do want to say that I have lost many student council elections over my time in K-12 education, but I won this one. So I'm officially the coolest person in Kentucky.
A-U-W-L.
There you go. But since our convening, our three committees have gone right back to work. They worked during the convening to start drafting and just generally work on their new BHAGs, their Big Hairy Audacious Goals. And we do have those three completed ones today. I will tell you that the Bold New Futures Committee, which is the one that I'm on, met yesterday, as well as Accelerating Innovation. But Bold New Futures, over the next six months, will be working on, well, they divided into two different groups, well, subgroups. But they will be working on graduation requirements and looking what portion of a learner looks like in that context, how they can incorporate that, what path Kentuckians want to go with something like that. So obviously, we will be communicating that back with you and working with you all on graduation requirements. But we also split into two different groups. So we do have one working on family engagement and parent and community engagement. But we also have the group that's working specifically on policy, since we know that connecting with our communities takes a whole lot more focus. And we didn't want to take away from that or from the policy side of things. Accelerating Innovation also met yesterday. It was a joint committee meeting to really get that collaboration happening and to make sure that everyone was sharing valuable ideas. They will be working over the next six months to come up with a comparison of different possible models for our future assessment system. Over the last six months, they've been learning about different products from across the country, across the state, things like that, seeing what they could scale, what we're interested in, what are common themes. But now they'll be taking what they've learned and comparing those results, figuring out what would be the best possible choice, a combination of choices, anything like that. And then Vibrant Learning Experiences, which will be meeting on Thursday, Thursday, right?
So this week?
I thought it was a couple of weeks from now. I'm not. Oh, okay. All right. They will meet later in June. And they did take a little while to work on their Big Hairy Audacious Goal because they had made so much progress on their previous one. So during the convening, they started drafting it, but then realized they had a lot of work that they wanted to get done and needed the best possible way to get that done. So over the next six months, they will be developing a public-facing collection of vibrant learning experiences, examples of those that are, will be available to all Kentuckians to highlight their alignment to the commitment of shining through sharing, which I enjoy that little saying there. But they will be working on that. Over the last six months, they just wanted to learn about everything that they could learn about. Defining vibrant learning was really their goal. But just finding out what's happening in Kentucky, what's happening outside of Kentucky, and bringing those examples in so that we can use those. So that's what our committees are up to, and I'll give it back to Karen.
All right. Meredith, do you have our process map? All right. So if Meredith pulls that up, a while back, you all had asked for a big picture. How does everything fit together? And so we've actually been thinking a lot about that and how to graphically represent that for, for your benefit, for our benefit, for our members' benefit. Really, a lot of people needed some kind of a picture to understand how all of this is working. So as we talked through it, it turned into a process map. So that's what we have here. We wanted to be really sure that, we wanted it to be, I guess, generic enough that it will live on, whether beyond this grant. So if names change with standing committees or the council or anything else, we wanted this to be able to live on beyond that. So that's what I mean when I say we wanted this to be somewhat generic. But we also want it to be very specific about how we are working differently because of the grant that we received and the ability to be able to create this council and work together with them and with all of the districts. So we start off with inclusion. So looking at local innovation. So when I, when I say inclusion, we're talking about both the makeup of our council, as I stated at the beginning, everything that we look at when we invited people into this council, but also the fact that we're working with districts. So we're really looking at what they're doing and asking them to tell us about all of the great things that they're doing. You'll, you'll see that we have all four of the innovative habits on here. And that was really important to us because that is the basis for, for the change that we want to make throughout the education system. So starting with that inclusion, looking at those local innovations, what is emerging out there in the districts? How do we, what do we do with those things? So that comes into our council. They've been learning about all of the work of the L3s and things that are going on with deeper learning and really processing all of that. They've been doing their own site visits. We've talked about that. They've also been doing their own research, both within Kentucky and outside of Kentucky. So they're discerning everything that they're learning about and figuring out what kind of proposals do they want to make, whether it be to policy or to practice. From there, they will work with KDE, particularly Dr. Brewer's group, as they, if it comes about a policy change or a new policy that they want, or it could come into one of our offices for a new practice that they want to see implemented. So that's where this co-creation comes in. So what's being proposed by the council? And how is that going to play out within KDE? So our co-creation goes, it'll go back and forth there. Then it'll finally move on to this board. It'll, a recommendation will come from the council and KDE collectively. You'll be able to see what recommendations are being made, again, whether it be policy or practice. And if needed, it can then go in front of legislators if it needs that kind of approval. So that's where the reciprocity comes in. We're looking, seeking feedback from all of you, input from you. And that may need to go back into KDE or even back to the council for more rework before it can be implemented. And that's the final step is implementation. Throughout this process, we have many partners that we work with that can be, that are and will continue to be working with us from the very beginning, all the way through implementation in many cases. So I hope that this helps with some understanding. I know I went through that kind of quick, but I'm hoping that that gives a better understanding of how this whole process is meant to, to work. Okay. And then the last thing is just, again, wanted to point out that we do have the newsletter. So I hope that all of you are getting that and finding it informative. We've got our webpage, which was just updated with this process. And there's also some text to go along with it to help explain what I just verbally explained to you. And then our next convening will be in the fall, November 2nd and 3rd, which is a Thursday and Friday, and that will be here at KDE. That's all we have.
I do want to say thank you to the board for your commitment to United We Learn, both through the working groups and the continued work that you do there. But also, we did have three board members come to our last convening. So know that you're always welcome at the Cool Council convenings. We are the coolest people to hang out with. But we do have a fun time. We would love for you to come and learn with us. And we would love to learn from you at those meetings as well. So anytime you want to come, just tell Dr. Brewer and she will add you the invite.
And in terms of feeding cross-hybridization with the call to action, Meredith, when would that happen? Would that be November or before that in small groups?
So I believe we would like to have the document that's now been tentatively approved go to the Cool Council between, between now and August.
Okay, that's excellent. Okay, excellent. Other questions?
All right. Excellent. Thank you all so much. And it is delighted we are in the presence of Kentucky royalty. I am thrilled to invite Mandy Perez up to give us her Teacher of the Year update. Mandy, I hear people all the time talk about your gentle spirit and the way that when you start speaking, they hang on your every word. So I have felt that same, same glow from you when I've had the chance to hear from you. So we are delighted to spend this time with you, just reflecting on this past year.
Oh, thank you so much for having me this late afternoon. I'll try not to take too much of your time. I know you're probably dying to get home. And so I'm actually going to be ending my sabbatical here with the Kentucky Department of Education, June 30th. As much as I've been, have enjoyed this, I'm so excited to get back into the classroom with my kiddos because I've missed them so much this school year. So I'm kind of starting off with letting you know about how my journey has unfolded over the course of the last six months. I'd like to start with sharing with you something that I just researched and learned not too long ago. UC Davis instructor Laurie Ellington's research states that people often want to change by doing a 180, a complete turnaround, when the truth is that change happens over time in one or two degree increments. As I reflect on my journey as the 2023 Kentucky Teacher of the Year, I've asked myself time and time again, what has been the one? I've asked myself time and time again, what has been the one degree of change in my work regarding this role? What has been the most meaningful contribution? I have aimed to have one degree more impact on shining a light on the good in this profession. I have been successful in achieving this goal by giving back the very knowledge I have gained here at the Kentucky Department of Education by sharing it with others. Through practicing this one degree of change, a small stone was cast in the water to ripple out to those around me. This has created an uplifting change in agencies, systems, and lives, especially my own. Next slide, please. The journey of the ripple effects begins with one of the associate commissioners here at KDE. My first meeting was held with Associate Commissioner Dr. Byron Darnell. Dr. Byron Darnell left me inspired after my first meeting with him to be a light and shine a light on this profession. It was in that moment after meeting with him that I decided I would no longer allow the outside noise to take out um all of the disruption in education. The heart and passion for teaching that he possesses cannot be denied. I will never forget him ending our meeting with saying, "Every person has one teacher that impacted them. Why wouldn't you want that for every child to experience?" I remember thinking to myself, "This is it. This is the moment that I refuse for negativity to win over." I will choose to be the light by finding the good and remaining focused on sharing it throughout this journey. The next ripple effect comes from the student or the Commissioner Student Advisory Council. My experience presenting to the Commissioner Student Advisory Council led to developing a relationship with one of the students in particular. Her name is Ms. Sarah Umberger. Ms. Sarah Umberger approached me at the end of our very first meeting. She immediately asked me to be her special guest for her school's Female Leadership Forum. Of course, I was both humbled and honored, and I immediately agreed because it was the first time I'd been asked to be a speaker at an event. I was thinking, you know, small school, a small situation. Um, I remember pulling up and seeing uh the news channel there, and I was like, oh, no. Why is there a news channel here for this? Um, it turned out to be a beautiful event uh where I spoke to a hundred and fifty females in grades fourth through 12, inspiring them with the message. As you embark on your journey of becoming future empowered female leaders, I encourage you to just remember to be, be self-confident, be resilient, and be connected. I am personally committed and inspired to return home to Creighton County and organize an event just like this for my school district because I know that each one of those girls left that day feeling like a million bucks. Based on my positive experiences presenting and observing the Commissioner Student Council Advisory, I was able to share with the National Teachers of the Year cohort the value and importance of their work. Since that conversation, I've been working with Zachary Bean, the 2023 Wyoming Teacher of the Year, to prepare a proposal to present to his state superintendent, asking for the first ever Student Advisory Council to be created. Zachary has been in contact with me to say that the state superintendent seemed very receptive to the idea, and he is currently waiting to hear more from her. Zack has complimented the state of Kentucky in saying, "We are the frontrunners in education, leading with student voice being represented and heard." Yes, congratulations. Um, moving on to some more ripples. Um, I had the opportunity to work with um Dr. Damian Sweeney, KDE's Director of Inclusion and Belonging. He invited me during our first meeting to join his book club. When he asked me to join, I assumed we were starting the book club immediately. Um, turns out he wasn't preparing to start it until the fall. Um, I went ahead and finished the entire book and did the study guide and was ready, you know, to talk to him the next time about the whole thing. He was like, "Oh, yeah, no, that's not until, you know, the fall." And I was like, "Oh, okay, I'm sorry." Uh, but I'm finishing. I love it. So I fell in love with the book. The book introduced me actually to the concept of uh books being mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors uh that students need in order to grow. I became so passionate about what I had learned that I ended up writing a proposal with author approval um to use the content for a presentation for a teaching summit this summer at Murray State University. My proposal was accepted, and I will actually be presenting next week. Um, I'd also like to share the KDE communications team has done an outstanding job teaching me the proper use of social media regarding accessibility, especially Jacob Perkins. I'm a rule follower, as most educators are. My very first presentation, which was for the Commissioner Student Advisory Council, I created a beautiful, in my opinion, PowerPoint. It had all the cool, you know, effects. It was, it was perfect. And I got back um an email from Mr. Perkins, who I had never met before. And it was, I don't even know, a couple miles long of every accessibility law I had broken within the state of Kentucky, and he was not on my friend list from that point on. Um, but no, he, I have learned so much, so much, in fact, that when I met my national cohort members, um, I was talking about that experience, and they were like, "What do you mean? There are laws." And I was like, "What? You don't know?" You're getting sued. You're getting sued. And yeah, and so they've come to me and asked me, um, they still send me messages like, "Hey, what would you say now? The color, the what, what do you use for this and that? And how do you do the alt?" And I'm just like, "Yes, Kentucky way to go, way to go." Um, so yes, very excited. I've learned so much from the communications team. Um, and actually, because I had mentioned that, Audrey Lamb um had just finished developing and leading with the assistance of Jacob, of course, the first social media and video accessibility training for Team KDE folks. In the words of Audrey herself, she said, "The 2023 accomplishment for the communications team, for sure. Again, it has been my knowledge that I have gained from this department that has been able to be shared, that helps to elevate others." Barking Innovation Into Learning. There are two people I have met with that have truly changed my mindset as an educator. That would be James Allen, who also made me realize I lived back in the eighties in Western Kentucky, and um Donnie Piercy, the 2021 Kentucky Teacher of the Year. When I first introduced my idea of um reimagining libraries, I heard a lot of people say to me, "James Allen, you needed to meet with James Allen." I met with James Allen, and his first response to me was, "Oh, yeah, back in 2012, had this idea." And I'm like, "It's 2023, sir." Um, yes, and he, then he informs me of Eminence, and um I'm talking to Donnie Piercy on a podcast. He asked me to be on with him, and he speaks of, "I used to work at Eminence," and I'm like, "Eminence, okay, Eminence is a fantastic place. I'll say I need to be there." Um, I go and visit Eminence and wow, yes, that innovation at its finest is at Eminence. Both of those leaders and creative thinkers have introduced me to ways that learning can be unfolded and developed in education. That is unique. I'm able now to go back to my school district with a toolkit of instructional strategies aimed at increasing student engagement and developing creativity. I recently wrote a column about my visit to Eminence. It is now up on Kentucky, or Kentucky Teacher. From these experiences, I'm taking back to my classroom project-based learning experiences, effective ways of utilizing exemplars for assessing and developing a method for students to be able to work on earning micro credentials. Representing Kentucky at the White House. My passion for voicing the value of including diverse texts in the classroom was reignited after reading the book Conscious Classrooms, which was the book that Damian introduced me to for the book study. The moment I shared with First Lady Jill Biden that I was from Kentucky and I was a rural educator and that I champion for teachers to include diverse texts in their curriculum because I believe that every child deserves to be valued, heard, seen, and loved, regardless if that child is the only child in the classroom that may be different, was truly inspired from the work that I have been doing with Dr. Sweeney and also with the author of the book Conscious Classrooms, Alison Brusino. That may have been the, probably the most significant event for me so far as your 2023 Teacher of the Year. I have been waiting for a huge defining moment to define my success in this role. However, yesterday, I had a meeting with Dr. Woods Tucker. He should also be an inspirational speaker. He said something to me that allowed me to fully embrace this experience with pride. He said to me, "I've been watching you on this journey," which made me a little uneasy because I've actually heard that several times today from several people who I don't know in, in this department and this whole building, and I'm like, "Oh, gosh, they're not telling what I said or did," and they saw me and heard me. Um, he said, "I've been able to watch you on this journey. You lead with grace and promote public education because you talk about the beauty and the great liberation it provides. You don't have a soapbox. You have a true platform. You remain focused on the good in education with all heart. It's reassuring to know that I've made an impact, but it doesn't stop here. There are more things I would like to accomplish, and not all of those things have to happen right now. As a matter of fact, they may take years before they unfold. For example, Willie Carver could stop taking my light. That'd be great, you know, because he just keeps rolling on with things. Um, no, I'm so happy for Willie. Uh, this is perhaps the best reward that comes with this title. Being the 2023 Kentucky Teacher of the Year has created opportunities for me in ways that make meeting goals like what I wanna do in the future much more possible. While my sabbatical may be coming to an end this month, this will not be the last time you hear my name. I look forward to you learning about my future endeavors and accomplishments as the 2023 Kentucky Teacher of the Year." Thank you.
I just wanted to uh not prevent anybody from going to dinner or anything like that, but just wanted to let you know that um we had a really successful sabbatical, um, obviously with Mandy. It's the new procedure that we put in this, this year where they spend time with all of our associate commissioners and kinda spend a week um here at the Department of Education a month um to kind of just learn more about the agency. And um, you know, looking at feedback, we uh asked our associate commissioners and team leaders that met with her, found it very, very valuable. So we'll be bringing that back next year. We think it's really uh important uh for our teachers to be uh, to know the work that we're doing, but then also for them to take pieces of us back as well to their communities. Um, just letting you know, we've set the date for our 2024 Teacher of the Year um announcement. It'll be September 13th at the Capitol. Um, we're still in the process of um getting down to the, you know, thirty, twenty-four, you know, all of that. Uh, that should be within the next month. So a lot of exciting news coming from the Kentucky Teacher of the Year program. And just wanna shout out to Dr. Gliftisand Greider Jones, who has done an amazing job with uh this program in the past year and a half. And very proud of Mandy and all that she has accomplished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mandy, thank you. Don't be a stranger. Um, you're welcome back. You can find your way to 300 Sour anytime, and we'd love to visit with you. Um, and thank you for your service and um all of the glow that you continue to share. So we really appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Have fun back in Creighton with those kiddos, too.
Thank you.
You'll be happy you're back. Uh, um, friends, I would like to ask Jude and Joanna if you would mind if we move you guys to the morning. Um, we would be happy to stay, but I want everybody to really be able to kinda bask in your comments and not feel tired or rushed in any way. Uh, plus, it means you have to come back tomorrow. Um, I did double check that you both have a hotel room booked for tonight, so I'm not holding them hostage. Uh, but is that okay?
Yes.
Of course.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We will uh put that in the morning along with board member sharing and just spend time um hearing about your year, much uh like the reflections that we've heard today. So looking forward to that. Uh, and at that point, then, I am open uh to a motion to adjourn. Ms. Adams, thank you. And a second, Mr. Tremble can always count on him to second. Um, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye. Thank you so much. We'll see you in the morning, everyone. Uh, nine AM, back here, ready to go. So thank you.